I'd like to call the regular meeting of the City of Post Falls Planning Zoning Commission to order. Will you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple reminders. One, please silence your cellular device. Number two, up front, there is papers. If you are wishing to speak at all tonight, make sure that you fill that information out and you turn it to Amber up front. With that being said, we'll go ahead and get things started and start with roll call.
Stephenson.
Here.
Carrie.
Here.
Kimball.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Schlaughour.
Here.
Campy.
There.
Okay, Mr. Manley.
Can you hear the...
I think we're, I think we're all good. Okay, Mr. Manley, any amendments to the agenda this evening?
Yeah, we're going to be flipping a couple items on the public hearings. We're going to...
Rob, or there's Bill. Yeah, I can't hear anything.
Yeah, I don't know what. I can't hear as well.
Bill, chief, we can hear you.
I just called Stephanie to let her know.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, you're witnessing the miracle of technology.
Calling her, Warren called her too.
So, Mr. Manley, you were saying about an amendment to the agenda this evening.
Yeah, so item B, which was the North Shore District subdivision of Pewee is going to be moving to item C. And then item C, which was the Tullamore Vista annexation, is going to become item B. So they're kind of flipping their position on the agenda.
Okay, duly noted. Mr. Manley, why I have you here, any ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and/or presentations?
Well, Mark Latham, as you see, there is scheduled to be here this evening, and the reason being is he's part of the impact fee review committee. State statute Title 67, Chapter 82 requires that two or more members of that impact fee committee be in active business of development, building, or real estate. So being an architect, he is a member of that. Ray Kimball is the other one that serves as that role as far as the impact fee committee. So I do punt a little bit to legal counsel as if he is not present where we stand on that at this moment.
So Field, in addition to Ray getting a gold star for being here this evening, what else do we need to do?
I guess my, as far as, I guess I don't understand the question.
So the question is, we're going to be hearing a public hearing. The first public hearing is the impact fee adoption. Julie Herlans with Tishor Bice will be presenting that, and there'll be a decision that generally would be recommended and approved by the, or considered by that impact fee commission. If that impact fee commission is not in whole, being Mark Latham present, can that be an item that's heard?
So I'm going to let Warren pop in.
I don't know if you can see me or not.
We can see and hear you.
Without the, the complete makeup of the impact fee advisory committee, we can't move forward on that, that tonight. It has to be heard by the full makeup of that committee.
So we have two options here. If I'm not mistaken, number one would be to push that to the next meeting. The second piece would be to move Tullamore to the beginning, and if Mr. Latham shows up, is that correct?
Yeah, either of those options. We can't start that hearing without Mr. Latham being present.
Okay.
We can hope. We still got the consent to go through and citizens' issues, but yeah, I just wanted to bring that forward.
Okay, we'll keep an eye out. Any declaration of conflict this evening, commissioners?
None.
No.
No.
Okay, hearing none. Mr. Manley, consent calendar?
Yeah, item A is the meeting minutes from January 12th, 2021. Item B is the reasoned decision from Britton Place subdivision, file number SUBD102020. Item C is the reasoned decision, Nagel Storage Special Use Permit, file number USE22020. Item D is the meeting minutes from January 27th, 2021. And item E is the reasoned decision for Pleasant View Annexation, file number ANX62020.
Commissioners, you had a chance to review that. I would look for a motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Call for vote.
Stephenson.
Yes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Kimball.
Epstein.
Davis.
Yes.
Schlaughour.
Yes.
Campy.
Yes.
Okay, that moves us to citizen issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission on an issue that is not on this evening's agenda. We ask that comments on issues that are planned for future meetings be held for that. It is my understanding that we have an individual, Mr. Howard Burns, that does wish to address with a citizen issue. Please state your name and address. Come on up front, name, address, and you have four minutes, sir.
Thank you. Howard Burns, 502 South Rocky Point Court, Post Falls, Idaho. I am here for another issue, but in my studying of that issue, I came upon your code regarding notification and watched the notification for the issue that I am distressed by. And I would like to ask the city, the planning commission and city council and the city to consider revising the ordinance for notifications. Currently, you have a 300-foot radius, a small yellow, I'll call it a plaque or a little board about the size of a real estate sign, stuck into the ground on a bad fence post. And I guess there's a notice in the paper. In this digital age, you can't flip through the paper to the notices column and scam down them. You probably never even seen the notice section if you get a digital subscription anymore. I would like to see you change the ordinance to say if it's a, if it's a zoning change, if it's a variance of a major project, not one house, but a major project, that it's a two-foot by four-foot sign mounted three feet high, that there's five-inch-high letters that says notice of hearing and a date, and under that it says what it is. Is it a zone change? Is it a variance? Give people in cars the ability to see this sign driving by. Not everybody walks anymore. That gives adequate notice to everybody. Nobody's going to get up in here and complain after the fact that, well, you never notified me. There's going to be a giant sign on that property. It's going to make it very clear something's happening. The second reason is if I'm going out to look for a new house today in Post Falls where growth is happening incredibly fast, I look at a house, I don't own the lot yet, but I look at the, if I'm smart, I look at the zoning code and see that R1 is next door to me. And so I put the house under contract. Six months later, I come back to move in, and lo and behold, it's not R1 anymore. It's been changed. I didn't know about it. I don't own a lot. I didn't get notified. I'd also like to point out in the Tullamore annexation, if you look at the notice of 300 feet, that's going to be one homeowner. Nobody else is going to get noticed that lives in that area. Everything else are giant tracts of land. So I would propose in addition to the two-by-four sign, that the notification area be 500 feet, the greater of 500 feet, or 20 people, the closest 20 people to that project get notified. If that's greater than 500 feet, so be it. Because you could have a property owner that wants to put tiny little lots in the middle of a large parcel he owns, and nobody would get notified. So I ask you to please revise your ordinance, let people in this town know what's happening so they're not surprised. Thank you.
Mr. Burns, thank you. Mr. Manley, any unfinished or old business?
There's none.
Okay. Do we want to go ahead and open up with what used to be C, then was B? Do we want to move that to A and begin with Tullamore Vista, or do we want to address the...
I think we'd be at, having Tullamore Vista be the item A as Mark Latham's not currently here, so.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move Tullamore Vista Annexation, file ANX00072020, from C to A.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Do we need to move, make a, have a motion to table that to the next meeting? Is that the first public hearing?
For the impact fee adoption?
Yes.
We can, but we can address that.
At the end?
At the end.
Okay.
As we work through our...
If Mr. Latham shows?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Staff report.
Good evening, commissioners. Laura Jones, Associate Planner with the City of Post Falls. I'm here tonight to present the Tullamore Vista annexation. The applicant is Lake City Engineering, and the owner is Copper Basin Construction. The recommendation to city council, or the requested action tonight, is to make a recommendation to city council for the zoning designation of residential mixed as part of the annexation request of approximately 20 acres into the City of Post Falls to allow for single-family attached and detached and duplex housing. The site location is, it's north of Prairie Avenue between Greens Ferry and Cecil. It's just north of the Green Meadows North subdivision that was recently approved and currently undergoing infants, infrastructure improvements. The properties to the west of the site are in the unincorporated portion of Cootney County, and they're developed as single-family homes. The north and east of the site is the Technology Park that's currently undeveloped. This is an image of the site on the western half of the site, looking north across Prairie Avenue. In the picture, you can see one of the single-family residences, which is in the Cootney County jurisdiction. This portion of the city is developing rapidly right now, so I did an overlay image to show you what is currently not constructed but approved. So if I can get my mouse to work here. This north half here is the Green Meadows North subdivision. The south half is Green Meadows East. And then southeast here, running north-south is the Pradera subdivision. And then again, east of the site and to the north is the Technology Park. The water provider is Ross Point Water District, and the City of Post Falls will be the sewer provider. For annexations, staff looks at the six zone change criteria. The first is that the zone, or excuse me, that the annexation should be consistent with the future land use map. This area is designated as transitional, and areas designated here should be suitable for future growth. Again, you can see here that it isn't the transitional zone. The transitional zone is different than other land use designations within the comp plan in that it does not have specific implementing zoning districts. Instead, it is assigned, or zone should be assigned to be compatible with adjacent zones and land uses within the city and consistent with the guiding principles within the areas, comp plan's focus area. The focus area in this portion of the city is 41 North. It calls out that development should develop as retail, mixed-use, residential, and service districts. It should allow regional, retail, residential, and service uses to coexist. Development should attract a range of residents offering shared, excuse me, shared amenities, housing variety, and neighborhood scaled services. It calls out that it should incorporate trails and interconnected walkable streets, focus multifamily, commercial, tech uses near higher classified roads, and provide pedestrian connectivity to multi-use paths and trails, including Prairie Trail. Based on that description of the focus area, the proposed zoning is compatible with the adjacent zones and land uses. The second criteria is that it be consistent with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan. This was, there's a complete analysis of this in the staff report, and that analysis shows that the proposed zoning is consistent with the goals and policies in the comp plan. The third criteria is that zoning is a sign following consideration of such items as street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic or natural features, and also to encourage a balance of land uses to help Post Falls remain a desirable, stable, and sustainable community. As far as street classification and traffic patterns, there's no concern here. West Prairie Avenue is a principal arterial, and there are no geographic or natural features to be concerned with. The surrounding zoning, again, to the south is the Green Meadows North subdivision, which it is zoned as R2 with a portion of commercial, but that subdivision was reviewed, and the proposal was for R1 residents with four commercial lots in that northeastern corner. Pradera subdivision to the southeast is R1, and that is proposed for single-family homes in that area. And then again, the Technology Park, the TM zone, to the north and the east. Again, here's that overlay showing what has already been approved in the area. It's a little hard to imagine right now because it's currently a field, so just to give you a better idea of what is currently under, or occurring in that area. The fourth criteria is that commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with higher road classification. As mentioned, Prairie Avenue is a principal arterial, and the applicant's proposing a medium-density product rather than a high-density product, so that would be consistent. Next, the limited or neighborhood commercial and low-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as they proceed further away from the higher-intensity urban activity. The applicant is not proposing any commercial activity. They are proposing a medium density rather than low. This is in line with the location along West Prairie Avenue between Greens Ferry and Cecil. And even though there's a lot of activity in this location, it's not considered a high-intensity use, so that would be also in line with the zoning criteria. Lastly, is that industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes and may be situated away from residential. The technology mixed zone does allow for both commercial and industrial uses. However, when those uses are known and they apply for a site plan review, there will be buffering requirements that will be met. For example, if a commercial business goes in between the RM zoning and the TM zoning, there will be a 15-foot buffer. If an industrial use goes in, it will be a 25-foot buffer. All of the mixed zones in our code require a development agreement. If your recommendation to city council is for approval of the RM zone, you'll need to acknowledge the limitation of single-family attached or detached, as well as duplex structures. This would then move forward as part of the residential mixed zone development agreement. This is the list of agencies that were notified of the project, and we're given a chance to comment. Of these agencies listed, two responded, the Post Falls Police Department and the Post Falls Highway District. Both were neutral to the project. That concludes my presentation on Tullamore annexation, or excuse me, Tullamore Vista annexation. And I can take questions.
Commissioners, questions for Laura?
I, oh.
Go ahead, please.
I was wondering, okay, on the, on the buffer that you're talking about, would that be the responsibility of the TM zone or the applicant here?
I believe it would be the, on the responsibility of the TM zone because currently it gives such a range of different uses. We don't know if it will be industrial or commercial because both types of uses are allowed in that zone. So as they bring proposals forward for development, we would have to assess it at that time and determine what buffer would be required.
Okay, so you're going to put the burden on the zone that's already there, or not on the zone that's asking?
Well, I guess I'll ask John on that. That's, to my knowledge, how it would work out since we don't know the current use of the technology mixed zone.
So the consideration goes to who's, whoever develops first. So, yeah, if you give it the residential mixed zone, and they're the first ones in, and they develop their single-family duplex, at this time, there is no use adjacent to buffer to assess it other than vacant land. Vacant land is not in that matrix to consider, so therefore there wouldn't be a buffer unless then at such time, then let's just say the tech park got going and they became first, then at that point in time, we would look at that. We do have a potential approved plan, so as long as things are unknown in the TM zone, with their, this development wouldn't be providing a buffer because there's a lot of unknowns. I have heard that the adjacent land is planning on additional, that's where they're probably, if there's going to be residential for the TM, because the main tech park, they can't put any sort of residential uses on that. So if there's going to be residential uses for that tech park, it's going to be on the land adjacent to the north and east of this project.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Not saying that they wouldn't have industrial. We don't know exactly what the TM.
Right, right. But it's first to, it's going to be, the burden's going to be on whoever is second.
Whoever's providing the impact generally is the one providing the buffer.
Oh, okay. Okay, gotcha.
Thanks.
I had a quick question regarding the RM zone. I didn't look it up before tonight. Does it have a required open space?
It does. It requires a 7% open space.
Okay, so that ought, that would, with regards to any development in there, if we, if the RM zone is included, it does require open space, which most residential zones don't.
Correct.
Will there, will there be any improvements to Prairie?
There will be improvements to Prairie, and I know Rob Polis is on Zoom, so he can answer if I speak incorrectly, but I believe it will be half of the right-of-way plus 10 feet.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you very much. I have the applicant, I believe.
Yeah, Drew, I believe, is representing the applicant.
Mr. Ditman. Mr. Ditman, you're on mute. Cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Now, yes.
Perfect. Don't know what that was about because I was unmuted. Chairman Davis, Drew Ditman, Lake City Engineering, 126 East Poplar Avenue, coming to you via Zoom from the City of Coeur d'Alene tonight, representing Copper Basin Construction in their request for annexation and zoning on about 20 acres of property. I'm going to try to share my screen here if I can. You guys see that slideshow okay?
No, we do not.
Do not? Well, then we're going to do it without the slideshow. How about that?
Old school is fine.
Old school is fine. So Laura, thank you very much, Laura, for your presentation. So we're annexing 20 acres of property north of Prairie Avenue, just north of the Green Meadows subdivision. It's next to the, the TM zone, the technology mixed park that's there. We're looking for a zoning designation of residential mix, and I know that's a new zoning designation for you guys, so I've got a little bit of information to go through on that. The property to the south, as Laura had already discussed, is zoned residential with the Green Meadows subdivision and the Pradera subdivision, and Tullamore is down there. There's a little bit of commercial that's down there as well, so from that aspect, it fits. Laura kind of went through the annexation and zoning policies, and they're covered in the staff report, and they're also covered in the project narrative that we submitted. Generally, all of that means, you know, is this a good fit for the City of Post Falls as a compatible with the surrounding land uses? Is it conformance with the comprehensive plan, master plans, et cetera? You guys have been down this road before, so you know, you know this. We feel, obviously, it's a good fit. It's surrounded by residential property to the south, the Technology Park to the east and the north, and actually, Copper Basin Construction is under contract on the 44 acres to the north and to the east of this project as well. So we'll be looking to be developing that in a similar fashion as well. Let's go talk about the RM zone a little bit. The RM zone, as I said, is a new zone for you guys. It's designed to provide some flexibility in housing choices. Single-family, multifamily, a range and a variety of housing types are allowed. As Commissioner Kimball did point out, there is a 7% open space requirement. We are aware of that, and because it is a little bit of a flexible zone, it's managed through a development agreement, and we've been working with staff towards, towards getting that development agreement finalized so that we can present it to council. And that development agreement will outline such things as density and housing product type, single-family versus multifamily, that kind of stuff. And so we have been working diligently with staff towards that. And a little bit again about the RM zone, right out of your Title 1816010, the RM zone is appropriate for areas designated low, medium, or high density residential and transitional in, as in the comprehensive plan, which we are. We're designated transitional in the comprehensive plan. It's also appropriate for areas that are readily serviced by collector and arterial streets and suitable for higher level of traffic. Obviously, we're adjacent to Prairie Avenue, which is a principal arterial, and areas where other public services are sufficiently available. So we do have sewer and water available. Sewers, it'd be extended from the Green Meadows subdivision to the south, and water will be served by Ross Point Water District. And then number four, the RM zone is appropriate for areas where the configuration of municipal infrastructure and neighboring land uses are compatible with the uses allowed in the RM zone. And as we discussed, the RM zone is flexible. It allows for a variety of, of housing. It actually allows for some commercial uses in it as well. And so that, to us, is a good fit to balance between that TM zone to the north and the east and the residential stuff to the south. With that, I will stand for any questions that you guys might have for me.
Commissioners, questions for Mr. Ditman?
None.
None at this time?
None.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Public comment in favor?
None.
Neutral?
None.
Opposed?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Field for clarification, these were, these were, oh, do we have one more? Looks like we've got a few citizen issues that I will read into record. Maureen Maron says, "We need quality of life to have a say in how we grow. We moved to, for the rural feel, slow, large, multifamily complexes. Take more homes like Dalton Gardens." Lindsay Olson says, "I'm unable to attend the meeting due to poor health, but I vote no on the annexation. Our infrastructure cannot support the amount of people that have moved here. We need time to catch up before adding more to the population. Not enough schools, roads, et cetera, to support it. If you build it, they will come situation. My taxes nearly doubled. My phone in the last two years has not stopped. Working in my house due to the overload of people on the towers, which is awful when you try to run a business from home. Let's not talk about how horrible the traffic is. So many effects on the quality of living. Please just stop the building, at least for now. Thanks, Lindsay." Abigail Edgar says, "I am writing to express my concerns regarding the potential approval of a residential zoning of Tullamore Vista on Prairie between Cecil and Greens Ferry. Approximately six months ago, the city approved residential zoning for a large property at the corner of Greens Ferry and Prairie. These homes are currently under construction. Looking at the Post Falls School District boundary maps, the children will reside in these homes." these homes, will attend Greens Ferry Elementary. If Tulamore Vista is approved for more residential housing, these children will also have to attend Greens Ferry Elementary. Greens Ferry Elementary currently has an average class size of 24 students per class. Result, Project STAR study proved that class sizes between 13 and 17 students have an 8% higher reading level, 9% higher mathematics level scores than students in classes of 22 to 25. Our schools are not able to withstand the growing number of homes in the area. Furthermore, traffic along this section of Prairie is already very high, and I often have to set through two cycles or more of lights to cross Highway 41 to the other side of Prairie. Our quality of life is decreasing. Post Falls does not have the infrastructure to sustain the amount that is occurring. I agree that growth is inevitable and even necessary. However, responsible and thoughtful growth must be at the forefront of our minds. Please do not approve the residential housing. At the very least, please require a minimum lot size of a half acre and delay the approval until the infrastructure required to sustain our quality of life is in place. Thank you for your time and your consideration." Howard Burns, "Is the requested zoning district compatible with the street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land use, community plans, and geographical or natural features of the area? No." Tulamore Vista annexation, a 20 lot proposed to be annexed in and requested to be subdivided into myriads of 4,400 square foot lots with RM zoning. I oppose the annexation above for the following reasons. It is premature, given the cross-street to Greens Ferry do not exist, nor any cross-street to Highway 41. Prairie is not the only access, is the only access and not fully improved, along with the whole right-of-way. The proposed draft subdivision lots of 4,400 square feet is out of keeping in the area. The proposed draft subdivision zoning creates an island of density where no significant density exists today. Density does not seem to be in compliance with the future land use map, which the impact fees being established in another hearing on February 9th are based. There are no significant landscape perimeters, buffers along the property lines to the east and the north in the proposed draft subdivision. There are no guest parking areas noted, and the lot sizes, the lot sizes such that it would be essential. No discussion of maximum house sizes. There should be a limit to the size and keep the maximum 40% of lot coverage. That seems to be the city of Post Falls code. Can the city guarantee that the land to the east will be business and the land use map, as the land use map implies? Many of the industrial and business areas seem to be getting approval for zoning changes request to residential. How many property owners have gotten written notice of annexation? A project of this density would affect many, yet sending notifications to those within 300 feet would only allow to existing residents. The other lots, north, northwest, and west across from Prairie are all large land honings with no residential to present but slated in the future to be? Question mark. The annexation and zoning to anything other than larger lots, I believe something larger than R1, is needed to the north of Prairie. It is setting up a surprise for future residents that move into the residential tracks nearby and sudden discovery of small lot projects in their midst. Approval years and years before, but not built. It must be annexed now, zoned for half-acre lots." And lastly... And is it Doug? Oh, Doug, okay. Does not wish to speak, but is in favor. Says, "I own 20 acres adjacent to the subject property. I have no objection to the proposed Tulamore Vista annexation." Okay, thank you, sir. All right. Amber, any others? If I butchered a name or didn't include something, I apologize, that was a mouthful, but I believe that we will turn over to the applicant, Mr. Dittman. Any rebuttal?
Thank you, Chairman Davis. Appreciate that. Thank you for the comments. I'm hearing most of the concerns, I was taking notes, were about infrastructure and quality of life, et cetera. This is annexation and zoning, so annexation zoning in and of itself, as you know, doesn't have impacts, but there are discussions in the staff report as it relates to infrastructure, particularly streets and traffic, and also water and sewer available, and there are no infrastructure issues. We do have approvals from the appropriate departments to move forward with the annexation and zoning. When we do come forward with a preliminary subdivision, we can address at that time any additional impacts or any additional infrastructure mitigation that's necessary. But at this time, and again, I'll defer to the staff report, there is adequate infrastructure available to serve the project. With that, I will stand for questions.
Any questions for Mr. Dittman, from the commissioners?
No.
None? Okay, Mr. Dittman, thank you very much. Commissioners, before we close anything out, any questions for Rob, Bill, John, anyone else? No questions before we close it out? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the hearing. I will open it up for comment. It's nice to have you all here in person. That much smoother. Ray, you're closest.
Yeah, so this is one of the, this is a property that is right next to the new technology mix zone. They're asking for a residential mix zone, which really dovetails nicely together. Those two are kinda meant to be in the very same vicinity of each other. And because they come with development agreements, that limits the type of development as well as gives the assurance of open space, which is something our other zones don't do. I think it speaks volumes that the one adjacent property owner that showed up tonight spoke in favor, and that the other one, which is the owner of the technology mix zone, didn't, was notified but didn't come. So obviously, as a developer, they don't care. Otherwise, they would've come and said something tonight. And it also sounds like, from what Drew said, that they're under contract with that property, for that property, so I don't even know if that matters now. So I do think that the criteria have been met for the residential mix zone. I think it's appropriate in that location. And I think that the staff report has got some pretty good language with regards to items to be considered in the annexation agreement. I think those are all appropriate items. And I think that, and I'll just finish with saying, I think the residential mix zone is the appropriate zone for the property, based on the testimony and the staff report.
Becky Jo?
I have to agree. I think this will serve as kind of like a buffer properties between probably more, a little bit larger lot, single-family and the technology area, which is something we try to do, kind of buffer so we're not have, you know, large lot houses and stuff right up against the commercial or something like that. So I think this is kind of serving as a buffer construction between those two uses.
Yeah, I'd have to agree. Same thing, just it's a good transitional area. I like the RM mix because it is flexible, so it kinda gives, you're not in a large single-family, but you're not in an apartment either. It gives some flexibility in type of houses in between there that other people might be able to afford as the growth happens here. Yeah, so I'd be in favor.
I'll start with Nancy and come back this way.
Well, okay. I think that the zoning of residential mix, it does make sense there. I also can understand where some citizens are coming from, feeling like we're just exploding with development and higher density. However, in this case, I think that the residential mix makes sense. There will be a development agreement. I think that will, that will help to put it together and hopefully a more constructive way that will ease some of the concerns about traffic and things of those natures. So I think in this case, residential mix is probably the right fit for there.
Ross?
Yeah, I think they've said everything. I think it's a, I think the technology mix is very important for the future of Post Falls, and I'm glad that it sits where it does, and I think the most appropriate adjacent use is the residential mixed.
Growing pains. I mean, that's what we're going through, and there's been lots of communities that have been through this before, and I think the difficult thing is a lot of times, we talk about improvements to roads and things of that nature, and in many cases, that comes with development. And I think that the market drives this, and I think that we are seeing more and more demand for less larger parcels and more manageable parcels, whether that be the age of applicants or individuals that are moving to the area or just simply demand. So I think at this point, I would entertain a motion if a commissioner wants to push something forward.
Okay, I'll give this a try. I move that we forward to the city council with a recommendation for approval with RM zoning, the Tulamore Vista Annexation File Number ANNX-0007-2020, with the inclusion of the, all the items on the annexation agreement.
I'd second it. Multiple seconds? Call for vote?
Hampi?
Yes.
Schlaauer?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes. Okay, move forward to city council. Mr. Manley. At this time, it appears, do we want to move impact fees to another date? Are we gonna hold on for hope at the very, very end?
I don't think it doesn't hurt just to go ahead and run North Shore. My chances of Mark showing up is probably pretty slim to none at this point, but...
I know commissioners are not supposed to have cellphones, but if anybody has his number, maybe throw him a text. If that's the case, then we'll go ahead here in just a second and open North Shore District Subdivision. Before I do, I just wanna make sure that everyone is on the same page. This is a public hearing. This is a civil public hearing, so I would ask that if you choose to speak, and it is my understanding that, is it Kelly Vellin, Mike Posario, Dan Leary, and Andy Mickle? And again, if I mispronounce your names, I apologize, but there are three groups that are speaking tonight that represent a group of individuals. Is that correct? Are those three individuals here, are those groups? Okay. If you are a single person representing a group of people and you've already communicated to us, I wanna make sure that we're clear. You have 15 minutes to speak. In the case of Dan Leary and Andy, you are splitting that 15 minutes. If you are here speaking in favor, neutral, or against, you have four minutes. I would ask that we're not a basketball, football game, so let's keep any cheering, applause, and/or comment to nothing. We wanna process this. We wanna hear everyone. If someone has spoke before you and has covered all the material that you wish to speak, we're all here. We'll be here all night if we need to, but if we can avoid duplication, it would be greatly appreciated. Okay, now that we're all on the same page, I'll go ahead and open up the North Shore District Subdivision and PUD. Mr. Manley?
Good evening, commissioners. John Manley, Planning Manager here with the city of Post Falls, presenting the North Shore subdivision of PUD, case file PUD 1, 2021, and SUBD 1, 2021. The owner of this property is Tether Properties LLC, and the representative for this is Scott MacArthur of H2 Surveying. So what they're asking for here is for a planned unit development approval and to subdivide approximately 10 acres into 47 lots. Project location, as you see here, it's east of Greens Ferry and west of Ponderosa Elementary. It's in between there, just south of Ponderosa Boulevard. Current land use of this is vacant mostly, and it's sloped and treed property. As stated, the proposed density is 4.7 with water and sewer being provided by the city of Post Falls. Surrounding zoning is as you see here, what's within the city limits is all zoned R1. The bulk and placement table, and I apologize for kind of the small font that's been copied and pasted onto this, but I try to wanna just kinda point out, here's your R1 at this location, and you can see here that it entertains a maximum dwelling unit density of five dwelling units per acre. The PUD, I'm gonna try to move, sorry about that, move this so you can read the slide. There we go. So the PUD allows for, it's a happy mouse. Okay, there we go. So it allows for deputies to entertain densities, as long as you provide 10% open space up to the maximum of the five dwelling units per acre. And the reason for that is if you go off the base 6,500 square feet that's allowed by the zone, which is a 60-foot wide lot by whatever depth, you do that with a straight-up subdivision, no open space being granted, and that's just good to go through the subdivision code. At times, developers wanna do something different, and they're willing to donate 10%, either sometimes to the overall community, sometimes it's within the community itself being developed. In this case, the proposal is to have the open space be part of this internal community. It also goes on to say that if they were to grant an additional 5%, so 15% open space, they could get up to a 5.5 dwelling units per acre. In this case, they're looking at the 4.7, which is less than the 5. What they have here, I wanted to point out, is tract F is this tract right here. It's kinda like an upside-down cross, but it kind of, it's generated, if you looked at the topo, that's kinda like a ravine, and so that has a cart path that kinda goes down the center of that ravine, and you can see that the plan is to have lots, then potentially daylight out onto that open space there. So that's the tract F, the 12%. I highlighted the purpose of the red box at this location is they are planning, because of some of the grades, to put in a retaining wall. And so hence, in the conditions of this, you see condition 15, that prior to doing any sort of mass grading on the site, they're gonna have to pull the appropriate permits and design details to assure integrity of that retaining wall along that eastern boundary of this project. The PUD design request that's with this, we have this bulk and placement table here. I try to zoom in here so we can read it and have it more legible. So like I said, typically, you have a 60-foot wide lot for an R1. What they're looking, in order to get the variability in housing types, is to range from the lot width from 30 feet to, it looks like, potentially 50-foot average there on the very bottom for that custom home. Trying to move, I don't know how to get rid of this. But... So there's also some range. They're asking for some deviations from that, the minimum, that 6,500 square foot per lot, like I mentioned. So here, what you see is the PUD provides for adequate, these are the PUD review criteria. So through the slideshow, go through the PUD review criteria, subdivision review criteria, then also talk about the flood prevention and other elements for review. So the first is to start off talking about the PUD review criteria, and that they provide for adequate utilities, services, and parking in the proposed development, and that it's integrated in the transportation network and serve the area. I have Rob Paulus. He's available to speak on this aspect of this. I don't know if Rob wants to chime in now to talk about the engineering part of this.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. Going into a little bit more detail on the transportation network and how this impacts, first focusing on the site itself, the site being a, looking at private... first focusing on the site itself, the site being a, looking at private roadways, the city standards require that a private roadway can be as narrow as 24 feet wide and would be required to have a sidewalk on one side of the private roadway. They are proposing a 28-foot wide roadway, which allows for parking on one side. And West Ravine Drive is being shown with sidewalks on both sides. East Ravine Drive on the east side of the project would have a sidewalk only on one side and not on the side, which is next to the proposed retaining wall. What they have internally for the private streets meets or exceeds our minimum standards for private roadways. When we look at the traffic that'd be coming from this project and how it impacts the city's system, Ponderosa Boulevard along the frontage is classified as a minor collector roadway. Minor collector roadways are typically tasked or identified to handle between 1,500 to 5,000 vehicles per day. Our most recent traffic count on Ponderosa Boulevard was back in 2014, where we counted approximately 1,500 vehicles per day. That was on a one-day count. And our transportation model shows similarly that there's less than 2,000 vehicles per day on that roadway. When we look a little bit more out into the future, 20-year, the year 2035, which is our current model build-out year, we anticipate with growth in the area that transportation will still be seeing less than 3,000 vehicles per day on Ponderosa Boulevard. Again, the maximum capacity for a minor collector is 5,000 vehicles per day, so we're still well below that. We're only at about 60% capacity on that roadway. Traffic coming to and leaving the site, we anticipate that most of that traffic will utilize Ponderosa Boulevard, 30 mile-per-hour roadway, to head either a quarter mile to the east, which would connect them to Spencer Street, another minor collector roadway, and then Spencer Street would take them either to Third Avenue or to Celtae Way, where they would then be able to move in an easterly direction to intersect with Highway 41 and the I-90 interchange. An alternate route, which exists presently, would be to take Ponderosa Boulevard about a mile to the east, which would be to Ross Point Road, which would connect them up to Highway 41. The reason I say long-term that it will be changing is we do have the I-90 Highway 41 interchange, which is anticipated to start construction in around 2023, and that will change traffic patterns so that people would be accessing Highway 41 and I-90 a little bit further to the west, about where Hairborne Avenue is now. Traffic from this site also has the opportunity to head a quarter mile to the west and intersect Greens Ferry Road, which is classified as a minor arterial roadway. And Greens Ferry Road would provide them connections to Third Avenue, which is a major collector, or up to Celtae Way, or continuing north of Celtae Way to Mullen Avenue, Prairie Avenue, et cetera. We did see in some of the comments that were made, there were some questions posed and concerns about traffic heading due north on Timber Lane. Timber Lane proceeds north just a few hundred feet, a little bit less than a thousand, and intersects with, and dead ends in a T-intersection. We don't see that traffic going down a 36-foot wide roadway would be a highly desirable route. There may be some amounts of traffic that go on it, but not a lot from the subdivision. I stand for any questions that anyone might have on the transportation network and impacts.
I have a quick question for Rob.
Yes, Mr. Kimball.
Rob, can you please talk a little bit about the city's intersection spacing standards and why you don't allow offset intersections?
Yeah, so the city's intersection spacing standards for a roadway such as Ponderosa Boulevard is every 250 feet between, let's see, between Timber Lane and then the next road immediately to the west, there's only 400 feet of separation between the two. What would happen is as you start to offset intersections, you tend to get, if there's a center-turning lane, that left-turning vehicles start to interact with each other and both get into that center-turn lane. We don't have that situation at this location, but with the offset lefts, you tend to have a higher incident rate where people can get into front-end collisions as they make left turns towards and into each other. And the 250 feet, in this case, if you had that distance, what you end up doing is a weaving pattern, or where a driver tends to want to align themselves to get ready for a left turn, would, to get into Timber Loop to head north, would overlap with the roadway into the subdivision if it was pushed further to the west. So it doesn't set up a very ideal situation in this location to push the roadway any further to the west, and it should be kept in alignment as proposed.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Rob? No, Mr. Manley, proceed. Thank you, Rob.
Go. Yeah, for some reason, the clicker decided not to work and is governed by the mouse now, so it's an interesting presentation here. So here we go. So the third review criteria is that the proposed PUD enhance the community design, and I list the four elements here. The next slides break this down into each element in a little bit more specifics. First one, looking at conserving and incorporating the site's significant natural, scenic, or historic features in its development. So in this one here, like I mentioned, you have the ravine and the gradation, and there was an attempt by the developer to utilize that as for the open space and utilize the ridge lines for where the driveline, drive aisles would be, to the most part. Integrating a mix of compatible land uses, and I highlight in the development, so this one here is more intrinsically nature of how does it affect itself. Looking at the layout of this, they're all varieties of smaller attached and detached projects with some larger lots closer to the river. Therefore, they would all be compatible with each other. The next one looks at being developed in a manner that blends in with the surrounding uses in the neighborhoods and public facilities. So looking at the nearby residential uses, and they're all single-family product in nature, therefore compatible in of itself, being all single-family ownership. What you're looking is just a differentiation in lot sizing at this point. The type of housing is still single-family development. Provide at least 10% of the gross land area for open space, which they are at the 12%. The fourth criteria is looking to see if it can be done in a timely development of the property, securing for the completion and maintenance. It's intended to be done in a single phase, therefore would be done in a timely manner. Cootenee County Fire did review this as part of the public notification and is attached in Exhibit A15, which I'll show just in the next slide. And the overall would be maintained by the HOA, therefore the fourth criteria could be met. Fire Department, this is what was in the preliminary plan that was submitted. The fire wanted a real minor modification, therefore this project could go forward as submitted. Really, they just were trying to move, instead of it coming straight out in between these lots out to Ponderosa, create a little more separation to the west for their emergency exit, and then they just had to put in the appropriate radiuses, and that meant fires' concern. So the project met all their needs for there. That kind of wraps up that PUD review criteria. Then we have the six review criteria. The first three here were pretty much already answered as part of the PUD with Rob's response dealing with the water supply system. You know, the staff report said that we'd be able to provide water, sewer would be able to be provided by the city of Post Falls, and it's commented accordingly in the staff report. There may be some utilizations of individual, like lift stations for the lower with the residential housing. Also, the streets, Rob discussed. The fourth one is looking for soil topographical conditions presenting hazards. As you know, in the staff report, there was an attachment of an erosion control plan. The slopes are identified in that, and the appropriate mitigation measures was submitted as far as staff's concerns within that staff report and identified by the applicant. And looking at whether it conforms to the requirements of the zoning code. As part of the intro, it was discussed that the five units per, the R1 allows up to five dwelling units per acre. They're at 4.7, so they'd be consistent with the R1. The exception being the lot size patterns is a deviation, hence the request for the PUD. And if the PUD aspect was approved, the subdivision would, that, the subdivision would be consistent with that PUD also. So they kind of go hand in hand. The sixth one deals with growth, paying for growth, and that's usually done through the payment of impact fees. We've got streets, public safety, and parks as an element of that. And so with each development permit, they would pay their fair share of their impact fee on those, on growth. Looking at the flood damage prevention, looking at the first three here, subdivision in a way that minimizes flood damage. Preliminary plans, so the preliminary plans shall include the firm, which was in the staff report, at Exhibit A8. Looking at the base flood elevations for the proposal, you see here the staff comment for really all those are that the firm's attached and that the base flood elevation is 21, 31, and that the, is Exhibit A3 details that all the residential lots and the roads are above the BFE. The fourth one looks at the public utilities and facilities, making sure that there's no impact for creating or flood damage. And as you see in the staff report, that once again, you have Exhibit A3, Sheet 13, 14, that the utilities, facilities are planned outside that BFE. That being said, though, all of these still require a flood plane permit with each, with the development. We do it, just because you're outside the BFE doesn't mean that excludes you from getting a flood plane permit and coordinated accordingly. All subdivisions shall have adequate drainage to provide or reduce exposure to flood. You can see that in the Exhibit A3 in that preliminary plan, that there is that erosion control plan submitted. And then we have a site disturbance section within Title 18 that details out what's required for you to do an erosion and sediment control plan with a subdivision plan submitted, or whenever you do a site disturbance. So here are sites that have slopes in excess of 15 or that have potential impact on stormwater to the Spokane River, hence the trigger for that erosion control plan. And I cited there in bold, once again, Exhibit A3 and those sheets, 13, 14, that address that. Agencies routed, as you see here. We did receive some comments. Police Department, they were neutral on it. The Highway District had no comment, and once again, the Cootenee County Fire, they approved for that Exhibit A15. I'd stand for any questions you have for staff at this point regarding either the PUD or the subdivision.
This allows for a single-family attached and/or detached, right?
Yeah, you can see along the northern side of their proposal, they have that common drive. They're looking at some twin homes. So they're basically, they look like a duplex, but they're actually a lot line that goes right down the middle of that. So they're for single-family. They're, we would see a single-family attached product versus the remainder are single-family detached product on smaller lots.
And then also, this development comes right to the river, so is that then private use of the river for this development area, or?
Yeah, this right here would be, and the applicant can probably speak to what their intent is, but if I'm looking at this, looks like this would be a private open space for the residents of this community. I don't, haven't heard they're going to put a gate on this, so I don't know.
That would be a possibility, or?
I, the applicant would say, but I mean, we don't say whether they can or they can't. It's a private road, so I mean, it'd be up to how they'd want to manage that private road and who can come and go through there.
Additional questions for staff?
John, so I just want to clarify. So in essence, there's, there's not an increased density, it's just the way they're arranging the lots to suit the geography there, that they have some narrower and wider lots? Is that the difference?
The most comprehensive way I can answer that question, I'm glad you asked it. When you look at a typical subdivision, you get outside of right-of-way and development, you get about 3.8 units per acre. It's about, it's pretty difficult to get to the five dwelling units per acre in a standard subdivision with 6,500 square foot lots. That's what triggers these PUDs, and it's why we have the PUD language the way it is. They are not exceeding what's allowed for the R1, that is a true statement, but they wouldn't yield probably this at 4.7 without doing a PUD. They would get like 38. So they're gaining, in essence, nine to 10 lots, maybe, maybe 12 lots, I don't know, by doing the PUD route?
Gotcha. Other questions? Nope. Mr. Manley, thank you.
Thanks.
Bring up the applicant.
See if I can successfully do, which one's yours? Is this Carpoint?
Yeah, she, she said she, nevermind. We just need to find her. This one? There it is. And then we just need to go to slideshow. Great.
Hopefully it works for you.
Do we need to share?
It started working again.
Well, great.
There you go.
Thank you. Can we slide that, John? Can we slide that to that side? So that box is out of the way. Slide that to that side.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to get rid of it.
Are we sharing the screen, John?
Yeah.
It's already.
Everybody can see that slideshow via the Zoom?
John?
I think you have to resume the share.
It's, it's not in the actual Zoom.
What? It's not in Zoom. You have to resume. Screen sharing paused.
Resume share.
Oh. Now we good?
Except that's your presentation.
Oh. So we have to do this, stop share, share screen, do this, share. Then go F5. Now is it share?
Yep.
Well, good evening, Chairman Davis and fellow planning commission members. My name is Glenn Lanker, and my address is 1029 East Shadowwood Lane in Coeur d'Alene. I'm an architect, and Scott MacArthur with me here. He's, he's my bodyguard, but he's also a civil engineer, and we're part of the North Shore District Development Team, and we're here to share the design concept, giving an overview of the application, and answer any questions. We'll go through this as briefly as we can and leave plenty of time for comments and questions, but this aerial photo shows the project location within the context of the city and the surrounding areas. And I think it's important to note that as our community grows, this is, this is probably a good example of infill development, which efficiently utilizes existing infrastructure capacity rather than extending new infrastructure out to outline areas and the associated additional expense of installing that in the city, having to maintain it and service it. And it also results in a lot more sprawl and vehicle miles traveled for the residents who have to live, live out there. So this is an efficient use of being able to accommodate growth and utilize the existing infrastructure capacity. We've redesigned and resubmitted the district project, the site plan, based on the principles of traditional neighborhood development. And that's important because, or TND for short, and this approach is pattern after the way great neighborhoods and small towns were designed for years historically. Good examples in our area might be the Fort Grounds or the South Hill in Spokane, if you've been, been through those neighborhoods. And then just a couple of critical characteristics of that approach. It's by creating a beautiful streetscape, there's a huge emphasis on walkability and balancing the needs of the pedestrian, creating a great pedestrian environment while still accommodating the vehicle. And then the most important way to accommodate this is to locate the garages at the rear of the lots. And this, there's a lot of benefits to that, even though there's a little bit more infrastructure involved, but it frees up the front of the, front of the homes for porches, and it also allows street trees to. allows street trees to be, to be used rather than, than having the, the street carved up by a whole bunch of driveways which preclude that. It frees up the, the front of the home for porches and a lot more pedestrian-friendly streetscape rather than being dominated by garages. And then there are other important design considerations that go with this and details that contribute to a beautiful neighborhood, including window, details like window proportions, quality materials. We're, we're committing to a, a high-quality standards in terms of designing, construction here, materials. We're, for example, we're going to use a, a real wood siding that's pre-finished, that we're, that we're pleased about. The roofs will be a concealed fastener 5V-type metal roof, and so there's going to be a significant increase in, in the standard quality of materials in designing, construction here. And then this next slide, it, it highlights the differences between the, between the two, the previous and the current submittal. We've, we've reduced the, the total number of units from 50 to 47, and we've reduced the number of those twin homes, as they were called, that from 18 down to 12. And, and, and keeping with the approach that we've adopted here, the majority of these units, 34 are actually, have garages, there are lots that have the garages accessed off of valleys. The, the streetwits, as was mentioned, are now 28 feet versus 24 feet, and that allows us to have additional guest parking along one side per the city standard and spread the, spread the guest parking throughout the neighborhood. Street trees, as I mentioned, are now, we can, we can space those every 30 feet on center rather than have those be interrupted by, and limited by driveways off the street. Even though the, even though the total units has increased, we've actually increased the, the total parking spaces. There's the city minimum of two spaces within each lot and garages, but there's also the guests, the 40 guest spaces in the street network, as I mentioned, and then there's most of the, most of the lots also have at least one additional guest parking station that is a condition. So we've actually increased from 127 to the total of 176, which is almost twice the city standard of three and three-quarters spaces per unit. And then it's also important to note, let me try to move this out of the way if I can. If I can minimize that, but. It, it, it allows us to do something that's really important, again, to create a more beautiful neighborhood. And what we, what we, the minimum, as was pointed out, the minimum setback for the R1 zone, the interior side setback is, is a total of 10 feet between houses, it's five foot on each side. What we are asking for as, as a condition is that we are increasing that from 10 feet total between the two, the two houses in a conventional, with the conventional zoning. We're increasing that a total of 15 feet between houses for the majority of them, which is another 50%. And actually, it's going to be, most of those will be 16 feet. And then we're, for the, the twin homes, for those 12, it'll be 12 feet, which still exceeds the 10 feet, which is the minimum under the current, current zoning standards. Just won't advance for me, and I'm not sure why. What's that? This, this drawing illustrates that, so that these are, these are the, what we, we have several different types of lot types we'll talk about to get a variety of different kinds of housing. And so this, this illustrates a portion of one of the streets that shows a typical 24-foot wide body of the house and then the 16 feet separation between them. Let me briefly go back to the site plan if I could and just quickly point out the various, the various lot types and why that variety is important. So we, we essentially have, I guess I, what'd I do here, Scott? I'm just trying to use the cursor. I need to go back to the site plan. Okay. Everybody see that? So there's, there's several basic lot types we'll talk about. These, these lots here are the cottage lots that are, that's one type. In order to respect the topography, the existing topography and, and save trees, this is a prototype that is called a treehouse lot, and that, that minimizes the footprint and the site disturbance and preserves as much of the terrain and existing trees as possible. These few lots along here are more custom lots, and then these are the twin home lots. As, as was mentioned, they're on their own individual lots, but they have, they share one common wall. So the idea is to create a, a variety of, of housing types. And, and this is an example quickly of, of the cottage house. This shows the, the two cars in the garage and the guest parking that we're committing to. So it frees up the front of the home for porches and street trees, a lot more attractive streetscape, and then there's a front porch, but opportunity for side and rear porches as well. And this is a two-story home. This, the, these houses will be in the range from 1,800 to 3,000 square feet. There's a side view of it and the front and the rear view. This is a, an example of the treehouse prototype we talked about, and that, we basically have, it's three levels, so that here is, that was the main level, and then the upper level and the lower level. And here's the site elevation which show, which is based on that, that slope of that ravine. So we minimize, we, we have the retaining wall for the garage, but other than that, it minimizes the, the site disturbance. This particular house is only 28 feet square, and it's more vertical, and again, preserves trees and, and the natural slope. That's what it looks like on the downhill side, so it has access to that, that trail at the ravine and, and the landscaped area down to the beach. And then this is the, this is example of those twin homes, if you will. They each have, in addition to their two-car garage, they have a private yard, and, and as I said, they have at least a six-foot side yard setback, which is a total of 12 feet. And, and the reason that, that this is important, just real quickly, is that there's a, you've probably heard of a movement called the Missing Middle Housing, and the whole idea in a great neighborhood is, is right now, there's very few choices in our area, and typically, you can either buy a, a single-family home on a large lot, or you can buy a, or you can live in a, in a, in an apartment complex. And so to be able to integrate housing that, that allows more choices into single-family neighborhoods, and there's critical things in terms of the scale and the detailing, and there's 12 of the 47, so roughly, roughly a quarter of these are these, but this, this will be an important thing to allow homeownership opportunities for more, more people, especially as we, as we grow. And, and so they're, they're designed and, and they're scaled to fit well within a, within a single-family neighborhood. And they are single-family, they're just attached at, at one common wall. Here's some quick examples of, of some housing and some projects that are well-done that, that reflect this, this, what's that? Okay. Real quickly, I'll fly through those because I want to leave time for Scott to talk about the infrastructure and important stuff. But this is, these are traditional neighborhood developments, and that gives you a glimpse of what, what, what the design and quality, and you can see, rather than dominated by garages, the streetscape is, is a lot more attractive. We had a, we had a neighborhood meeting on February 4th. We, my wife and I went and passed out flyers to about 50 people, the neighbors, we invited them, and about 11 people came, plus Scott and I, and we kind of presented this and had some great conversations and heard some questions and concerns and had a good dialogue. So, go ahead.
Sorry, Scott MacArthur, H2 Surveying and Engineering, PO Box 2916, Hayden, Idaho. As I tap Glenn and try to take over from where great presentations leave off from John and Glenn, I just wanted to hit on the infrastructure, just because that's important to me. One of the big things is just making sure, sure we have the adequate water supply, adequate fire flows. I've been through the calks, I've addressed everything, we've worked on looping this system for water with the city. We've met all the requirements for DEQ, and we are planning to have a partial loop for this water system while still providing over 2,800 gallons minute for fire flow. And I'm trying to rush here. Public sewer, we have an existing sewer main. Again, Glenn mentioned that having the public infrastructure already extended at your front door is much better than trying to bring that into the city and then extend that services, which costs more money for the city. So the existing services are there, and as Rob Paulus mentioned, for the city, the sanitary sewer, the domestic water supply, the roads, everything's there to serve this development, and it's already sized and designed. We'll expand the infrastructure internally to serve this development only. And part of that, like I said, with the wastewater, it's providing a low-pressure sewer system for majority of this, rather than a lift station that the city would have to own and maintain. This is a low-pressure sewer system, which puts the responsibility back on the homeowner to pump to this city-owned pressure sewer main, and again, reduces the, the need for another lift station to serve a piece of property. Dry utilities, all available in the public right-of-way, serve the adjacent single-family homes. Stormwater, I believe, is a kind of a big thing, and we've addressed that. We provided the stormwater calks to the city for review, and we show on our development plan, it's here in front of you, how we collect, you know, convey, collect, treat, and release the stormwater. The on-street network, again, Mr. Paulus represented the city there, just with his voice, we couldn't see his face, but I know that he knows, and he's pointed out, as it is in the staff report, that the, the local street networks are minimally impacted, are minimally impacted right now, and this proposed development, even through the year 2035, you won't even see near the maximum potential use of that interior, or exterior, excuse me, the perimeter road network. We are providing pedestrian, bicycle access internally. We do have sidewalks and pathways with a major focus on preserving the conservation of the natural topography. That was what the subdivision was designed around. And then also taking advantage of that waterfront. We're not coming in and trying to pack as many waterfront homes, which are a high-price sell. We're, we're taking that out, where we do have a couple of waterfront homes, but we are trying to leave the majority of that to the homeowner, so they have something that they can use, and, and what better recreation than the Spokane River? Again, I see my time has expired, so, again, I guess the big part that we want to hit tonight is just that this is an infill project. We do meet the requirements as stated in the staff report, and we're glad to have worked with the city for the past year, and we're glad to pull that project back in December and say, hey, like, let's take another look at this, and we're pleased with what we're bringing forward, so. Any questions?
Questions for applicant?
I have one. Mr. MacArthur, could you talk a little bit, or maybe go back to that site plan and describe how the stormwater is going to be diverted away from the adjacent properties?
So what we're proposing, and I don't know if you've looked at the proposed temporary erosion control plan, the interior streets will have individual stormwater areas. Stormwater areas are not calculated in the open space, and so they are in tracks. So they are located within tracks. This particular area here, if you guys can see my cursor, this stormwater area here, obviously, it's a, it's a typical stormwater collection area. Everything will be conveyed by trails or through grading to these designated areas prior to be even outlet to historical drainage channels. So I guess...
I want to be a little more specific in my question to help you out. So on the southwest corner, there's an adjacent property that kind of, kind of pokes in there, right there.
Down here?
Yep. And we saw a comment from them.
Correct.
Describing that they were concerned about stormwater draining from this development onto, directly onto their property towards their house. Can you describe how you will be handling stormwater in that area?
So this particular road will be called West Ravine Drive, and at this approximate location, there's a low point, and then the road will climb. Right now, there's two knolls, basically, this, these plateaus that extend out, and we're going to be bringing those knolls down to bring, to have the natural topography play into account, to create that more flat area for the proposed housing types that we're looking for. And so this particular cul-de-sac drains back to the north, to this area, and then this alley will drain to a stormwater swell that's located in this area, which by no means can push through the topography to get to that home there. So everything's essentially draining away. Now, the individual lots, when they're constructed, they'll be required, obviously, to address stormwater on their property, and we'll, I guess one of the biggest aspects of this is that you have one developer, one builder, and they're going to be building all the homes and taking care of everything. So they're, they're picking the homes for the lots, they're going to be selecting how the lots are graded, they'll, they'll seek our attention to those problem areas. But that's one of the requirements in the city of Post Falls, is that you address that issue, that your irrigation water and your stormwater, it doesn't flow into your neighbor's property. You take care of it on your property, and that's just a standard requirement.
Would you be opposed to a condition of approval to that effect?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Other questions for applicant?
Do you have any pictures of the road, basically where your ingress egress is going to come meet Pontarosa there, how you're going to get in and out? Do you have any pictures?
Of the intersection?
Yeah, of what, of what that looks like now. I just, I, I know I read some comments that there was some concerns about where that was at.
Okay.
Like it could be located, you know?
I don't have any photos. Well, I mean, the photo wouldn't do any justice. In my narrative, there's a couple of photos of Pontarosa.
It's just hard for me to kind of get a, so across the street is, is another road, right?
Directly across the street is the public-owned and maintained timber lane.
Okay.
And as Mr. Paulus and Mr. Manley discussed, the requirement is to, to line up, you know, to have that network and not offset them. And that's probably the biggest reason why we had to relocate our emergency access, our secondary emergency access, that will only be used for emergencies, is that we needed to maintain that 250-foot separation.
Okay.
So we pushed our emergency access further to the west.
Okay.
So we have 260 feet between the main approach, Timber Lane, and the, in the event there's an emergency, we're not trying to clog up that intersection. So again...
So essentially, the city wanted you to have that there?
Yeah, it was a requirement for this.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Public comment in favor?
We do have a few in favor. One is via Zoom, so I will call on James Grassi now.
Okay, Mr. Grassi, if you can hear me, make sure to state your name and address, and you have four minutes.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Jim Grassi. My wife and I have been in Post Falls for about 23, 24 years. I've been involved in various capacities with the city of Post Falls and police and the fire. I appreciate the excellent presentation that your staff gave. As a former city manager and a person involved in public administration for over 20 years, I really commend you for the great work they're doing. I would like to also say that I know the developers, the people involved in this project. I followed them over the years in various developments, and I highly commend them, and will tell you that when I look at people on either your side of the desk or the staff side, I look for people of high integrity and character, and what they say they'll do, they will do. I think this is the best use of the land. I think right now, it's a blight on the community, is I utilize the river regularly, as well as drive down Pontarosa. It sticks out like a sore thumb right now when you compare it to the surrounding neighborhood. I also commend the architect and the people involved in the planning. This looks like North Idaho versus what we have up in Coeur d'Alene, that looks like something that belongs in Pismo Beach or Florida. I think it's very much a northwest look and a craftsman look. Currently, to do nothing, which some of the neighbors would say, well, we like, like it just like it is. Well, first of all, it's a fire hazard. Secondly, a lot of young people use this area for drug... Secondly, a lot of young people use this area for drug use and other things of trespassing nature that present a problem to the community. And again, I just have reviewed the plans. I highly commend this project to you. I live at 730 North Coles Loop. I also have a business here, PO Box 3303, Post Falls. And I just really commend you folks for how you handled your business as a commission and especially your staff for the diligence they put forth in showing this project has minimum impact and would be a real asset to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Grassi. Other individuals wishing to speak or in favor?
We have two more in favor.
Okay.
First in favor is Steve Shortridge. To whom may concern, my name is Stephen Shortridge. My wife and I are considering living in the community. I have lived in Courtland for 30 years and currently have a home in Sanders Beach area downtown. I personally support this project, and I appreciate the design using large public spaces and having a private community. I like, or I feel like they have done exceptionally well in considering the impact and finish of their project, also maintaining topography where possibly is greatly appreciated. Another individual who wishes to speak and is in favor here tonight is Susan Weeks.
I'll have you come up.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll notice on there, I am representative for the applicant, and I only wish to speak if legal rebuttal is required.
I appreciate, I will read your comments for the record. I am in favor of this subdivision. I am PUD, I only wish to speak for rebuttal, and the applicant is required. I did not read that far ahead, and I appreciate it. Anyone else in virtual or local here now wishing to speak in favor?
No.
Neutral?
None neutral.
Okay, those opposed?
We have two in Zoom.
Okay.
David Hill, he said that he might want to wish to speak.
Okay, Mr. Hill, if you're here, you have four minutes, but please state your name and address.
Oh, am I there?
Yes, sir, you are.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
David Hill, 3088 East Rivercrest, Post Falls. I understand the project, but my question is to the density. You're going down to, what, 4,000 square foot or something lots from 6,000? And that's on your, on the, the single-family ones? And that's not the density on the, what do you call them, twins or whatever they are up at the top? There's nothing in this area that dense. There's nothing across the street, there's nothing adjacent to this that is that dense. So I mean, overall, the project is, it's fine to develop it. I just think you're crowding, and 47 is a little large and a little much for that tract of land.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hill. Do we have another on Zoom?
We do. We have Kelly Valen.
Kelly, if you are there, again, state your name, address, and you have four minutes.
Kelly actually has 15.
Oh, okay. Oh, so Kelly is on Zoom. Okay, so he is representing a group of individuals. So again, we just need to state your name, address, and then, yes, sir, you have 15 minutes.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My name is Kelly Valen. I live at 9478 Marine Drive, or I'm sorry, 9427 Marine Drive. I'm also speaking on behalf of Tom and Colleen Holmes that live at 8880 and 9478 Marine Drive. We're a family here that own the 950 feet that is west of the proposed property. Our main concern would be for erosion and storm drainage, which I know that, I believe it was Mr. Kimball that brought that to the attention earlier. But the North Ravine Drive that has the garages that are directly facing our property with the five-foot green buffer that is there, our concern is for snow removal, that if they're going to be graded down towards the garages or if they're going to be graded towards that five-foot buffer during a heavy snowstorm, is that snow removal going to be pushed onto our property? The other concern would be for the unsiteliness of the garages on our property if we ever wanted to have future developments on our side. That would greatly decrease the value and sites for our potential property. The main thing would be for the flooding and the land slippage that would come down onto our home on lots 33 and 34. They both appear to be above or below the street level, which I know that they did touch on, but as our home is roughly 35 feet below that home. We haven't seen any of the soil sampling or anything that would satisfy the ground structure, that if there was significant rainfall or snow, that there wouldn't be any landslides that would come into our home with the removal and groundwork that would be during the development. Let's see here. Our other concern would be in, with the rain runoff. As it stands now, the rain does come through, which I do have video footage showing that the rain falls and comes through our, basically a river down our drive. So we wanted to know what they would be doing to mitigate that as well. With the traffic concerns, I know that they talked about the traffic patterns for the future. Did they also take into consideration the future traffic for the potential Green's Ferry Bridge that would be coming? Most traffic that would be coming across the bridge would cut across Ponderosa, which that would increase the traffic with the addition to this PUD. So far, I know that most of the things I was going to talk about were addressed in this meeting. So I don't want to continually, like you said, double up on what we want to talk about. And I'm sure that there will be others that'll be talking about the same things. But those were the main issues that we were concerned with.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. I see applicant making notes, so I'm sure that there will be, during rebuttal, some of those questions answered. But I appreciate the time and the concern. Do we have anyone else on Zoom?
So the rest are in person.
Okay.
Here in the chambers and then in our overflow room.
Okay. All right, so first individual, I believe, is here. Is it Mike, is it Pellicero? If I butcher your name, I do deeply apologize.
I'll be the first. Can I be the first? We kind of have an order before we realize.
Okay, so Dan, are you and Andy sharing time?
Yeah.
Okay, so you each have seven and a half minutes. So again, just come up, state your name, and then you can watch the clock to transition.
My name is Dan Larry. I live at 512 Shore Pines Court in Post Falls.
Thanks, sir.
You want to wait for Andy, or what are we doing here?
Nope, he can work his way up.
So first, I want to introduce myself, Andy Michaels and Mike Pellicero. The three of us, along with Barbara Nygaard, Abraham Rochati, are the affected and aggrieved parties to this matter as owners of property along east side of this development. We want to go on record that we object to the timing of this hearing. I'm submitting for the record an email that was previously sent to the planning and zoning.
Sir, can I have you speak into the mic just so that we can have it recorded?
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Nope, you're good.
Excuse me. Planning and zoning addressing the hearing, why this hearing fails to meet the time requirements outlined in City Code, rendering this entire public hearing unlawful. We did receive a response from Mayor Jacobson, which he denied our request, but we are not in agreement with this decision, and we would ask that this email be submitted for the record.
You can go ahead and turn that in. Amber, you want...
Okay. In addition to this, we previously, excuse me, in addition to this, we also have spoken to 19 neighbors on this, and we're representing them at this time. Their names have been submitted, and they are all opposed to this PUD. At the time of the planning and zoning hearing for annexation in 2019, I think most of us believed that this was just a request for a PUD. And I, excuse me, not for PUD, for annexation, I'm sorry. And I would just like to read the transcript of some of the deliberation that went on. Hampy, think this makes sense as well. I'm not sure what else we would want there besides an R1. Carrie, I agree with Hampy for this one. Latham, I am for the annexation. I personally feel like there should be something in between an R1 and an R1S, only because an R1, they can bring the lot sizes down to 6,500 square feet. But I'm sure there's a slim chance of this happening. I think it should be quarter to half acre minimum. Davis, isn't there some geographical conditions with that slope to make it impossible to go maximum density, or am I wrong? Manley, that is correct. Cafferty, I think his question is, can you put less than 7,000 square foot lots on all 10 acres with the slope that exists? Manley, you cannot do less than 6,500. Kimball, it's obvious that this should be residential, the R1 zoning fits well, and is a great opportunity to annex some high-value property. This was the deliberation when this annexation was filed for, and I want that noted. Go ahead, try to make this quick. Whoa, 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 hang on. In review of the submission, the application is still incomplete. It still does not meet the PUD criteria. There are serious flood, FEMA, and soil issues that have not been addressed, and it is certainly not consistent with surrounding areas. I'm going to turn this over to Mike and Andy to provide specific examples, but I'd like to point some out on my behalf as far as concerns and inconsistencies. First, I'd like to address that the applicant has not submitted a notice of intent with the, excuse me, a notice of intent letter to the EPA as required by the City Code 18.24.060B7. The applicant suggests that he will do this upon approval of this project. However, the code requires that this EPA notice letter be included when applying for a subdivision or PUD permit. And also in the submission, they state that the high erosion area, as determined by the city, will be further detailed at the time of approval, and a formal development plan will be submitted for review at a later date. It seems to me that there are some open items here that don't give us much assurance as to what's going to happen. All right? Specifically, some of the inconsistencies and concerns in the submission. The proposal requests 47 single-family residents for the drawing, but they also show townhouses with two front entrances. The cul-de-sac, in the narrative on page 19, states that the cul-de-sac radiuses are 40 feet, but the drawings are indicate, like on page 60, that they're 52 feet. The sidewalks are addressed in the narrative, but they're not shown in the driveway, or excuse me, on the drawing, specifically Rivulet, is that how you pronounce it, Rivulet Lane? So a lot of this, I guess we're thinking, you know, what are we arguing? Because we're not sure what the risk is, because there's inconsistency in the submission. Parking, they propose 28 spaces alongside of the garages when the request is to reduce the width of these lots from 60 to only 35 feet. And then it shows 14 parking spots in front of the garage, and they're asking for setbacks to be reduced, in the front, to be reduced from 10 feet to 5 feet. Then it states there's going to be 40 on-street parallel parking spots. And I'm glad you're allowing old school, because I don't have. But I want to show you, if I could approach a little bit, so that you can see this.
Do we have the ability to throw it up on the screen?
I don't believe we do. I can double-check with Stephanie, but I don't think our overhead's currently working.
Okay.
Well, if you could pass along, let me try to do this. This is my residence, and this is 510 Shore Pines Court. This is what I'm looking at currently right now, what we're seeing back there. Along this area, right here specifically, they're asking to put six parallel parking spots in there. So rather than this, I'm going to be faced with looking at this. Okay? And then, if I could, as this proceeds out, this area here, this is where they're going to put all these homes that they're saying they're going to have the garage stuff. So essentially, you're going to have this parking, parallel parking, then you're going to have a street, and then you're going to have garages. So what I'm looking at out of my house, and I don't think anybody in Post Falls sees a neighborhood can do such as, where you're looking at a street, and then you're looking at garages. It's just not consistent with what's going on in any neighborhood of Post Falls. Sorry. On the staff report, page 43, they're stating the proposed uses of lot sizes in this proposed PUD are similar in manner that blends with the surrounding usages, neighborhoods, and public facilities located in the city. I don't see having garages in the front of any lot as consistent with surrounding neighborhoods. And then lastly, a couple more photos here for you. Drainage is all diagrams in this area. I'll take my notes with me to expedite this. This is still that same area between my house and 510 Shore Pines. And for those of you who are familiar with it, the water from mine will run up here and run up 510 as well as all the homes that go up to Ponderosa, which is probably a couple other yards.
One minute, Mr. Lee, just so you know, just one minute. You're good.
All that water runs down into, runs down into this area. They're imposing a raise this four feet, essentially closing their dam with no mention of any drainage. And correctly, first, what concern now, and that should be concerning the city, this submission now states the development has a failed stormwater management system, and we, the city of Post Falls and the Shore Pine homeowners, need to re-engineer our stormwater per city standards and requirements. I've been there for 32 years, the stormwater in front of my house, and as far as I know, the city was approved and everything's been maintained. When does the city ever require the development to re-engineer and improve the cost of the stormwater management systems previously approved by the city, particularly when their house had any major issues with this drainage over 32 years? Now they want the cost of construction to be slowed by raising that four feet right there.
I have seconds.
And on the property line, and they feel the city and most of us in Shore Pines should be responsible for the cost of re-engineering that.
Okay.
So I'm opposed. And one other thing, briefly, the fellow that said that they're, I've lived there for 30-plus years, the kids in there and the drug usage didn't happen, hasn't ever happened.
Thank you, sir.
We're going to need those exhibits that you provided for the record.
I'm sorry?
So we'll need those exhibits that you provided, the pictures that you showed us. We'll have to enter all that into the record.
Okay.
So you can turn it in. Don't worry, Andy, we haven't started your time yet. You're still good.
I'll be.
We also need him to talk into the mic. Yeah, we'll make sure he comes up. Thank you. Have you come up? State your name and address to the mic.
Andy Michaels, 2938 East Ponderosa Boulevard, Post Falls. As mentioned before, the property has a ravine that runs through it. This ravine is actually fed by a 24-inch culvert that runs underneath Ponderosa Boulevard. During some rainfalls, we went out there, took some videos, measurements and things like that, and there's about 60 acres on the north side of Ponderosa that is serviced by dry wells. Once those dry wells fill up, everything in that kind of approximate 60-acre radius flows down the streets and into a catch basin that flows into this 24-inch culvert and then down the ravine. In fact, last summer, the city went to that culvert and increased the drain size because it couldn't handle the amount of water that was going in it and waters backing up onto Ponderosa Boulevard. So I mention this because in referencing this 24-inch culvert in the applicant's narrative on page 15, it says that this culvert does not appear based on visual observation to be able to convey any water. And that the drainage from the 60 acres that gets collected during a rain event is quote-unquote unlikely. Living about 100 feet away from the exit of that culvert, I can tell you for a fact that there is water that runs out of that. And the, even though they characterize this culvert as not flowing any water, I And the, even though they characterize this culvert as not flowing any water, I, I don't see that questioned at all in the staff report. And so, I just kinda, I guess, find it hard to believe that we either are just accepting that, that there's this twenty-four-inch culvert there that is just aesthetic, doesn't serve any purposes, and that the city would go in and increase the size of the drain for this culvert, even though it doesn't flow water. So, I have an issue that the calculations for the stormwater runoff coming onto that property through the existing channels is not covered in the calculations that they have. So, we placed a call to FEMA. FEMA said this looks like an issue we should look into, and they suggested working with the local FEMA mapping coordinator, which is Mr. Manley for the city, I believe, and that's what I was told, sorry. So, anyways, we were hoping that in the official staff report, that we could get that specific issue addressed and get it in writing, saying that the city agrees with the applicant's characterization that there is no water flowing through that twenty-four-inch culvert. So, I think that the application is deficient, incomplete, I think that it does not match the surrounding density of the home, homes that are there, even though everything's R1, you know, our R1 is much bigger than the minimum lot size, so even though it's all, you know, R1, it still doesn't match what's in the surrounding area. And finally, the deliberation that you guys had for the annexation, you know, looked to those notes of what you guys discussed earlier, and so with all that in mind, I ask that you please reject the PUD.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, you would need to come to the mic and address, are you slated to speak?
Yeah, I was just going to, with his time, if it was any matter, I have the video that I could show you of water coming down there, overflowing the sidewalk, going into a, I didn't, I could find a ten-year-old showing how to get the video off my phone, so.
I don't know how we'd get that.
If you would like to see that, to what I'm, to kind of what he's referencing, of how much floodwater goes, I could show you.
It becomes a legal question as to what can be entered in, and we would need to address everything from upfront, I'll turn it over to Field.
Yeah, and I, I don't know how we'd get that into the record.
Okay. All right.
It's, you know, written, a written comment or something submitted ahead of time likely could have been included.
But unfortunately, from a video standpoint, we, there's nothing that we can do to enter it in.
Well, and we're, yeah, and we're here for oral testimony.
Right. Okay. It is noted, um, Mike, is it, Palisro?
Palisro.
Palisro. Sir, I believe you are also representing individuals?
Yes, sir.
I need you to come up, state your name, your address, and you have fifteen minutes as well.
Oh, and this is for the written record, Ms. Lunchett.
From the, from the commissioner's standpoint, can you describe what you turned in for the record?
Uh, when I submitted her, I was, originally thought I was gonna be able to have a lot more time to speak, I didn't realize it was gonna be cut to fifteen minutes. And so, that was kind of a lot of the narrative, so I put in that for the record was the, all of my narrative that I was trying to address, that I wanted to be able to address in this, some photographs that support a lot of what I'm trying, what I'll be referencing and things like that.
Okay.
So, if you, hopefully can bear with me a little bit as I go through here, because I'm gonna be kind of trying to glean off of everything, I was literally pulling this off the printers as we spoke to the, as I was walking out the door.
Okay.
Mr. Manley, is there a way to bring up and put the, um, the site map, that green picture that was, they had up there? That one, right there?
So, let me pause the timer for you.
Thank you, sir.
See, is this one?
Yes, sir.
Where you're looking for?
Yeah, just so I have some references, we'll point things out.
Let's see. Cindy. Okay. Leave. Okay.
Thank you. Um, all right, just trying to glean through this, some of this stuff has been touched on, but I'd like to talk about, I personally had conversations when I, this was first posted, with Ethan Porter, numerous conversations every time I might request it of him, what is this? He said this is an R1, it is sixty-five-hundred minimum square foot lot sizes, several conversations with him on that. He said that they can't make it anything less, the city doesn't give property credits, because I'm familiar with some of the stuff they do there, he says, no, regardless of everything else, it's R1. They're twisting it around, where they say that the R1, and R1 basically is five, when they say five homes per acre, means five sixty-five-hundred square foot lots, thirty-two-thousand square foot, the remaining eleven-thousand square feet is basically for infrastructure, things like that there. At one point after they had the sign-up, I called the developer, spoke to the sign, Mr. Jay Enos, to find out what they intended as behalf of our, because I'm president of our association next door, which is the Shore Pines homeowners. He came out and said they were for, the city was making them put in denser units around, and he said around forty units. I again called Mr. Porter and asked him, and he said that, no, he goes, that would be illegal for them to be able to put something in that was publicly stated on the record as part of the annexation. He also said, that, you know, acceptable, it's pretty much so a rubber stamp, because it is consistent with the surrounding areas. I relayed that to most of the neighbors, so most people didn't come to the things, figured, well, okay, if it's a rubber stamp, R1, okay. Few of us went, including myself, to the meeting about it, Ethan Porter presented on it, Scott MacArthur came, and he's kind of followed up and said, yeah, pretty much, so this is just a straightforward R1 annexation, even commented on the job that Mr. Porter did. Should be noted also in that hearing there, uh, Mr. Gordon Dobler, he was presenting on another thing during the same hearing, at that time Commissioner Comment, Commissioner Kimball commented about bait and switch on projects. On another one, he was also presented, they brought up something about a PUD, and he, Mr. Dobler had commented that a lot of times, PUDs, they take the wasted space and call it open space. Planning Commission, they debated it, and again, like they said, it was pretty much so, sounded like they said that that would be an R1, that's what they called out for. In the recent decision dated January fourteenth of two thousand and twenty, they mentioned several times, R1 zones, sixty-five-hundred square foot minimum lot sizes, the council held the hearing on January twenty-first to consider the thing. And also, I'd note that on twenty, the council meeting was on the twenty-first, but on the twentieth, we have paperwork dated from H2 Engineering, that they were already drawing up the PUD at that time there, is that what Commissioner Kimball meant about bait and switch? They were already coming in planning, why didn't they come in and ask for it at that time? This is nothing, this is nothing inconsistent with the entire area. Of the forty-seven lots they proposed, only four of them are over sixty-five-hundred square feet, two of them, and the, the two large ones there with their own private one, according to Mr. Enos, that's for him and his son-in-law, so it's not like it's something for the public, it's just, it's just for them. Twelve of those are twenty-nine-hundred-and-forty square feet or less. Moving on to the open space, as I'm, sorry if I go fast, anyway, moving on to the open space, they say it's one-point-two acres of twelve, twelve percent open space. City Post Falls municipal code defines open space as areas usable of a mix of active and passive recreational activities by all occupants of the area being developed, and large enough to be usable for parkland and/or recreational uses, it must be a minimum of the ten percent area. As previously pointed out in our engineers' report, this open space that they're calling across the front of that, and I wish it were bigger, because you could see the slopes we're actually at, the reality of it, the area that's usable is approximately sixteen feet from the normal summer flow watermark to where those, those slopes start at twenty percent or higher going straight up. That area there, after you take away what they're having for their private ones, that's about three-hundred foot of frontage, so that leaves them about five-thousand square feet of space for that there, or point-one-two acres, or one-point-two percent of the open space. Now, even if you count the little bit of the mouth of the ravine there, and I, like I say, if you could see how much slopes there were, and then the cart path, it's still under a quarter of an acre. Any activity on the slopes surrounding the usual open space will result in disruption of the natural vegetation and accelerate erosion. We'd also note that the proposed trail is ten foot, the cart path is ten feet wide with, according to their drawings, with swales on both sides, so that is not someone's, anyone can be able to play on at all. You know, we're not a PUD, we have similar slopes with ours, within our neighborhood that are just matching theirs, we have to constantly remind everybody, please stay off the slopes because of the erosion. Examples of recre, active recreational activity include baseball, football, soccer, golf, hockey, tennis, skiing, skateboard, pretty much so in that area, about the only thing that could be done would be skateboard up and down the path. About the only passive activity that can be enjoyed would be walking up and down the path, maybe picnicking, so long as anyone else is not using the limited space. Wildlife union is considered a, an activity, a passive activity, but unfortunately, by the time they're done, the deer, the moose, the fox, the raccoons, everything else in the world will be gone. Even in Mr. Manley's response, he acknowledges the area could be used for passive activities, page four, but he omits the city requirement that also, that also includes active. The city code specifically says a mix of active and passive recreational activities, not and/or. The bottom line is, they're just taking wasted space that they can't use for anything else and call it open space, we ask you to deny it on that. We can go through the sufficient parking, on this picture, you notice over on the side here, this picture has the scale on it, so it should be the scale. If you notice on the right side of east ravine over here, those houses are smaller, but they're the same ones and other, because when you look at it, it looks like, oh, they've got great big driveways, but when you look at the actual drawings for those, on the drawings, and I have the page number in there, it's in my paperwork, those drawings, those garages are ten feet back from the property line of the front, so you could park a motorcycle in there. Uh, we, an officer, we had verified that the city of Post Falls, like most cities, cannot enforce and do not enforce private property parking. So who's gonna enforce anything like that? And like this officer said, you know, they kind of forget about the fact that this is Idaho, people store toys and everything else in their garages. So in all probability, all that guest parking that you see on there is gonna be used by the residents, along with people with bigger vehicles. My, I have a stock truck, mine's twenty-one feet long. Try to watch your clock there. One of the big things I want to get into, you know, the wastewater managers touch on is that they had called out before in the, when this system was, when it was turned down for an incompleteness letter, they had called out the, something to do with the wastewater management, they don't say whether this is a step system or a GP system, these, all these houses on the slope are gonna have those things in the bottom of the slope, which reads straight to the Spokane River. What, what, what precautions are they gonna have? A GP system, a power failure, where's all that going? Their geotechnical report is non-existent, they can call it what they want to, they start out with first, they reference the fact, and it says on page six of the staff report, that no soil or topical conditions have been identified as presenting hazard, that's because the report on this is so flawed, I don't know where to begin. Our own engineer, he looked at this and saw flies right off of the bat. We'll first start within the air-to-air narrative, they reference the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Services report on page forty-three. We have to be very clear, that USDA report, they didn't come out, they didn't dig holes, they didn't do soils, they've mentioned over and over at times, the information is intended to help land users identify and reduce the effects of soil limitations. The landowner or user is responsible for identifying and complying with existing laws and regulations. It is basically just a thing that's put together, as they say, for everywhere from farmers to educators and everyone in between. They specifically say that there should be some specific work done, so we jump over to their actual report from the, their soils people that they had come out and do the IPEC geotechnical evaluation. As our engineer pointed out, this is for a single home on there, it was dated June twenty-seventh of twenty, uh, two thousand eight, two thousand eighteen. That's a single home, it was not done for everything. They did seven test pits on the, on that, that particular property, none of them had anything with any kind of percussion testing whatsoever. They state in their report that the, for the project was a single home, they further emphasize, data analysis and recommendations may not be appropriate for other structures or purposes. It was for that home. I would also note, each of the test pits they done, you'll have to refer to their map, none of them were done anywhere remotely close to where they are proposing major, all of these drywells and basins. One of them, fifteen, was the closest one, would be test pit number five, was only dug to twelve foot before it started caving in. They're proposing a thirteen-foot retaining wall, they say plus or minus two to plus or minus ten foot, but I can read the blueprints, this minus this equals this, and it's over a twelve-foot retaining wall with a swale below it. Our own engineer says swales below retaining walls that big should not be done. If that should cave in, do they propose to go on my property to fix it? They also, we have talked to engineers, I have personal experience in it, block manufacturers, a retaining wall with the top of it's right on the property line, and they're proposing it to be almost straight up and down to what's a minimum degree, requires a geo-grid that should be going in several feet back, and if they're gonna have the top of that property on my property line, are they proposing to dig into my property? They will not have permission to go on my property to dig in and properly put that in. They say we will submit designs on it later. Once it's submitted and this is approved, and it goes later, I have no way to look at it and make sure that my property, my neighbor's property, or anything else is being protected. As they also point out in the NRCS report, is that soils vary greatly. Twenty feet from where they proposed that retaining wall, I have an area in my yard that in the springtime is a marsh, I can dig down a foot and hit water. And I have to watch how much in the summer, because it gets wet. Twenty feet away from that, I have an area I can't get water to soak into. So how are they gonna tell us that any of this has been identified, that there's any problems, when the fact there has been really no soils testing done for this project? We also have to minimize flood damage, and I can go through each of the, the particular basins, but the one in question will be the one in the top right-hand corner, they call Basin C. They propose on that there is twelve-thousand square feet of pavement to that area. In addition to what Mr. Michaels called out about that entire half-mile area that feeds into there as part of the FEMA flood control, additionally, that, that particular drain that's right there on the north side is the, from the drywall that at, across from Shore Pines, then feeds all the way to the other side, my son and I went out with this three-hundred-foot tape measure, six-hundred-and-sixty feet of Ponderosa also feeds into that. Additionally, two-hundred feet of Timber Lane and two-hundred feet of Forest Glen, both sides all feed into that, that is the drainage system, that's why the city came out, jackhammered up the other one, I went to be nosy and asked what they're doing, they say it wasn't sufficient to handle it, that all flows in there, all flows down into that property. When you calculate that up, that's more like forty-seven-thousand square feet of pavement that's feeding into that just on a regular storm, not to mention the videos I have of all of it flooding through. So how do they even come up with calculations? If Basin C fills up, there is a pipe that comes under that feeds it, so now that's gonna start flooding all the people on the other side and turning all their backyards into a lake, because there's a ravine on the north side that also comes through, feeds through that pipe, this is the natural flow through there. And I would think that in looking at something I was reading today, that there is a, would be, I considered an easement, an implied easement, both because of the amount of time, implied easement by prior use, and implied easement by necessity of that entire ravine, that is an easement for flood control through there. The Centennial Trail, they have said, when we've brought this up before, where's it? In the mailbox, oh, we're gonna locate it, we're gonna locate it. Are they doing anything? I walked into the post office, took me five minutes, and was able to say, no, it's gonna go out on Ponderosa. So that fifty, forty-seven to fifty boxes, they're gonna be right there on Ponderosa, blocking the Centennial Trail. I also have submitted any pictures there for you, along the front of the property there, along the shoreline, and you can even see it on their drawing there, there are pictures in there, that shoreline, if you look, is a natural riprap of rock all across there, that's never been developed, no one's ever done anything, but right where the base of that ravine is, you can see where it's all washed out, and I measured it today with a tape measure, at the east side of the property, we can see there, right now, the current water from the normal storm flow level is just about thirty feet of shoreline right now. Where that, mouth of that ravine is right there, there are pictures in there, it's eighty feet, because that has, over the years, that is a natural ravine, that is a natural flood control through there. By blocking this off, they are making no addressing to it. On the side right over here, you look at the natural grades and everything else, that Basin C, they call out, and they say there's also a, Basin B has a drywall, I can't find it on the plans. All of that street flows towards there. If that thing overflows, it is going right down through that little space there to the house at five-twenty-two South Shore Pines, you look at that there, that thing overflows, they're gonna have to open their side door and back door to let the water flow through. It is gonna be a flood condition. These, what they're trying to shove in there does not fit.
Minute fifteen seconds, sir.
Yeah, I'm trying to, like I said, I got.
I know you are.
As I said, we know, parking, I probably pointed out here, talking to an officer, and he asked us what it was, what we're talking, because I asked him, do you force it? No, and he asked why, and he says- and back door to let the water flow through. It is going to be a flood condition. What they're trying to shove in there does not fit.
Minute 15 seconds, sir.
Yeah, I'm trying to, like I said, I got.
I know you are.
As I said, we know the parking, I probably pointed out here, talking to an officer, and he asked us what it was, what we're talking, because I asked him, do you force it? No, and he asked why, and he says, they are experiencing this all over the city. These things are being shoved up, they have private property, no parking. The officers are the brunt of people's frustration when they come out and say, there's nothing we can do about it, it's private property. They think the officers won't do it. I know they did send something to the city, and they said they're neutral on it. Well, it's probably, did that go to the officers and dispatchers that have to have these people's frustration, or did it actually go to, to the officers that have to deal with the people every day? It probably just went to a desk and got rubber stamped, like most of them seem to be. Looking at even the sufficient parking, they don't call out what side of the streets are parking on. Like on this, on this side over here, you look between the driveways, there's about 13 feet from what I can estimate. So they're not going to be parking on the west side of that street, which means they're going to probably expect everybody parking on the other side, and that's what we get to look at, out of our back doors. To this thing right now, I've got like nine seconds. The way they propose that we have no way to be able to look at, have our independent engineers, which we should not have to pay for, that is something that is their job and their job to make sure this is properly done. They are endangering our properties and a potential hazard to the Spokane River in this current condition. Our own engineer said last time, as part of our submission, that this property cannot support the number of homes they have based on the terrain and proximity to the Spokane River. I ask that you please deny the PUD. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We've got a little bit of a procedural issue with the written testimony that he provided.
Okay.
Basically, it has come in after the written portion, and so if it is deemed to not comply with, with the standards, that's a decision for you to make.
So our procedure, and this is up to the commission, procedure says, written testimony and exhibits must be submitted at least six calendar days prior to the date of the public hearing. And goes on and says, if written testimony or exhibits fail to comply in the aforementioned standards, chairperson counsel commission may declare such testimony inadmissible. So basically, commissioners, we have two options, and Field, correct me if I'm wrong. The two options are, we continue to hear all of the testimony, but we do not make a recommendation. We leave it open so that all that information can be processed, that we can take a look at it and vote on it at a later time, correct?
And also give the applicant a chance for rebuttal.
Right. That's option one. Option two is, is that we do not allow the information to be submitted, because it did not fall within the six-day guideline, and we would move forward as normal. And at that point, if the individuals who've submitted the information want to, the word I'm looking for, contest to city council, or what's the term I'm looking for?
Probably appeal.
Appeal. There would be an appeal that the citizens could put forth so that it would be here, it would be heard by city council. If we voted to deny it, then obviously applicant could do the exact same thing. So we move forward and don't allow the individual information, or we move forward, then we allow time for rebuttal, and we let them, basically put everything together and vote at a later time.
May I say something on that, sir?
From a legal standpoint? Yeah, that's fine.
As they pointed out, we asked for an objection to this. This whole thing is, seems to be all geared towards the developer. We had pointed out that in their section specifically, it said that they're supposed to have a letter of completeness from that point 45 days. That is in the Post Falls municipal code. We had submitted in that. So we get this package, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an architect, but I know how to read blueprints and things. So I have been trying to prepare this, in amongst all my other life duties. It's not my job, you know, so I've been trying to prepare it as fast as I can. I think any of my neighbors that know, I mean, that's been, you know, every free moment I've been living and breathing things, trying to get it. So to try and get it amount of time, nobody says that you guys have to have this submitted. They pulled it in December, had plenty of time to come back with it. And now we're supposed to have this short amount of time to prepare for it. So I would ask that some leeway and some consideration would please be given that.
I appreciate that. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this was posted twice, correct?
Believe so. That might be a question for John.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I got a quick question for the, do you feel like if you were given an extra five or so minutes, would you be able to cover in your oral testimony what you had written?
No. I was trying to summarize, I mean, this, my, like I said, I was, I was thinking about 40 minutes of everything that I had written in here, because we wanted to address everything about the annexation hearings, all the stuff when I attended on that. Because like, you know, like I said, I was, you know, there, I talked to Mr. Porter over and over again about it. Very nice man, he was assuring us of it. I relayed this to all these conversations to our neighbors. If we would have known this was coming into something else, we would have all been there to say either we want something in there or protested it. The open space, where, you know, I addressed that there just as briefly as I can, but I went in, you know, stuck tape measures through the fence and everything else to look at this here, and to try and, you know, be able to show it, you know, the parking, the sufficient parking, I've gone through street by, I can go through street by street and just show the problems, even, you know, like on Rivulet Lane there, there's no sidewalk there, but those houses, those houses in that lane front that street, there's no sidewalk, it's an alley. It's just, there are so many things in here that I could go on and on about. Even 40 minutes, I could still be almost, you know, pushing it.
I mean, is there an opportunity, I mean, we've had the opportunity to review all of the written testimony that's been sent in, and it's, there's a lot. And, and I think that, is there anything unique in here that we haven't already heard about, or seen in the written testimony that you, that you could use some more time to explain?
I can go through and call out all of these basins, that I really would question these basins and everything, the flood control, which way it's going, the grades, the numbers don't, that are, I'm questioning, I mean, I, like I said, I'm just, you know, I'm just a person, I don't, I'm not an engineer, but I can do math, and these numbers are, you know, they're pavement numbers. Even two of the Post Falls stormwater drain management systems stay right on them, does not provide adequate treatment. In red, how come, you know, what's with that? If their numbers say they don't provide that.
So ultimately, what would end up happening is that, Ross, we would have to put everything in and basically have the packet sent back out to us and review everything, because the reality is applicant has 15 minutes, the rebuttal is a limited amount of time. We're not going to give anybody 40 minutes. That's just not policy or procedure. Field, anything to add?
No, I think you've summed that up very well.
So I would be curious, from the commissioner's standpoint, what their thoughts are.
I think, I think what, you know, under the circumstances, if we could give some consideration to a small amount of additional oral testimony, I think that would be about the most consideration that's reasonable.
So we have additional individuals that wish to speak tonight. If we move forward, then at that point, I mean, basically, the decision doesn't not have to be at this second, we can move through and make the decision at the end of all public comment and after rebuttal to either leave it open?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's always an option for the, the commission, so you could leave it till the end. I just wanted.
Because we still have several individuals that wish to speak, so I'd be curious to find out what's covered, then at that point, if the commission feels, now we need to leave it open, or?
Ryan.
Yes.
I think Warren has something to say to Mr. Wilson.
Okay.
Yes, the Zoom stuff is hard.
Yes.
So I don't think you have the luxury of leaving this until after rebuttal. The applicant have the due process, right, to be able to rebut any information that has been put into the record. I don't think you can ask them to rebut something that's not been admitted. I think you've got a choice to make at the moment, that is, either to admit the information, if you're going to admit the information, you can continue oral testimony, but the applicant needs to be given an opportunity to rebut anything that's submitted in writing. You probably need to set a deadline for when that needs to be submitted, so that you would have all of that information submitted back to you in time for your next hearing for consideration. The other alternative is just simply to reject the information because it was untimely submitted. And the reason this is important is because as a planning commission, you act as, essentially as a judge, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, everybody has the right to present their own testimony and rebut the information in the record that the other side has presented. And for us to maintain procedural fairness, we have to make sure that that is complied with.
So again, Warren, to be clear, we can continue through with the hearing if we choose that we are not going to make a recommendation tonight.
You can continue the hearing for receipt of rebuttal information regarding to the excessive written material that was submitted. But I think you need to make that decision at the moment now, so that you are putting the applicant in a position to rebut the information that's currently in the record and not have them trying to speak to something that they don't know what it is.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant requests to be heard.
Okay. Actually, I'll have you come to the mic. Thank you, sir.
Susan Weeks, 1626 Lincoln Way, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, attorney for the applicant. Mr. Chair, commissioners, and Mr. Wilson, we're willing to waive our, our opportunity to rebut and to allow the materials into the record. We're not willing to rebut our, our entire rebuttal, but we're willing to rebut the written materials.
So in essence, what we're doing is we'll continue to move forward, gather that information, and make decision at a later date. Everybody comfortable with that?
I'd be comfortable with taking in this information written, and as long as they're okay with not having an opportunity to rebut that information, close the public hearing, and then after we review that information, make the decision.
They'll still need to be able to rebut after the information has been reviewed.
I think they're, and correct me if I'm wrong this week.
Do I understand that right, Ms. Weeks?
Procedurally, we're willing to waive doing a written rebuttal and go to decision tonight.
Oh, okay, decision tonight.
Basically allowing the written material in without having the opportunity to rebut
We don't know what's in the written, I mean, I.
I think it's probably safe to assume we have the lion's share of this additional written information.
I agree.
And I think we just, I think we have enough information, we just.
Yeah, I think everybody's on the same.
They've got more time to present more, more oral arguments. I don't think we need to bring in any more written.
One more point. I'm not sure you're catching me, but if you're going to let it in, the other issue you're going to have to have is you have to consider all of the information that's in the record prior to rendering, rendering your decision.
Right.
Then if the applicant isn't as willing to waive rebuttal, they, you still need to take a break and make sure that you have read everything that's been submitted in writing.
Right.
So we can't make a decision tonight if we don't, if we're going to allow the written testimony?
Yeah, by my.
And we have to have time to review it in order to make a decision. So no decision, no vote could be taken tonight if we're going to allow the written testimony, correct?
Correct. It's about 25 pages.
Okay.
So that would obviously be brought to us in that kind of a case, and I would throw it to Field and to Warren as well. We continue on to hear everyone else's, or are we basically stopping things right now until we have all that information, process it, and pick it up next time?
I think you can continue the public hearing.
That's what I thought, okay.
And, and then we can close the public hearing portion, allow the additional time to review and, and make the decision.
Still providing the applicant opportunity to rebut the information at the later date.
Yep.
Okay. Everybody on?
Yes.
Everybody on the same page?
Yep.
I don't think I quite understand what you're saying there.
So basically, they're allowing the information to come in, we're going to proceed through everything this evening, hear it all out, but without rebuttal, that additional information is going to be put in so that we have opportunity to review it, and then from there, render a decision.
They can make rebuttal for that.
That's an option. That's an, that would be option one.
Option.
The other option is to not allow it in, continue with the public hearing as normal, consider all the public testimony and the testimony that was provided.
Here's the other thing to consider, is that some of these pieces, when you talk about the engineering and the conversation they had, the police department, some of those things, I'm pretty sure they happened not six days ago. So there could have been opportunity for that information to be entered. We can proceed as normal, we can allow rebuttal, we can render a decision, and if it is a decision that either party chooses not to agree with, they can appeal it to city council.
Correct.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I think it would be wise for us to allow Mr. Pellicero, I think is what, how you say it, to have another five minutes of oral testimony. Ask him to stick to the points that are the decision criteria, both the PUD and subdivision, and then not allow the written testimony.
I agree.
I would agree with that as well, and again, it's a situation that if necessary, either party can appeal to city council. Field, am I correct?
Yes.
Correct. Everybody on the same page? Everybody okay with that? Any opposed? Okay, we will continue to move forward. Next individual?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
As part of that, I'd like Mr. Pellicero to come back up and, and give him five minutes to.
Or maybe at the, at the end, it is option.
At the end afterwards.
Okay, we'll allow everybody to work through.
Thank you.
Danny Taylor does not wish to speak but is in opposition. I support verbal testimony, I support verbal testimony of North Pines neighborhood, or Shore Pines neighborhood. Density for the project is not consistent nor beneficial for the surrounding neighborhoods. I will add substantial traffic on the river. The proposed open space will essentially become semi-private public park. The proposed density adds a few friends and relatives, you will end up with a public park, very little way to police, and we live in an era where defund the police is popular mantra, let's hope it doesn't come to Post Falls. Individual in opposition that does wish to speak, Erica Mikels, you want to come up, state your name, address, and you have four minutes.
You got any more of those minutes? Yeah, I do. Hi, my name is Eric Michaels. I live at 2938 East Ponderosa Boulevard, and my property borders this proposed PUD overlay. I definitely, I oppose the PUD overlay, and I, I ask that you reject the application and uphold the true R1 zoning. In permanent application, the developer claimed the property was zoned R1, and therefore the proposed development in the same density as the surrounding property is. And I think that you had asked, you know, does it seem like a similar density? And it sounds like, you know, technically it meets the criteria, but when you look at the surrounding neighborhoods, you know, it's nothing like anything in the area. For example, the neighborhood that I'm in is Shore Pines, there's 21 homes on 7.5 acres, that's about 2.8 homes per acre. Next to that, we have Rivercrest, it's also a shared waterfront community, there's 14 homes on 10.5 acres, so that's even less, it's 1.3 homes per acre. You move down to Riverside Harbor, pretty large development, and again, 22.6 acres, 2.7 homes per acre. So, you know, technically, if it meets the criteria, it's still, the density is much different than the surrounding area that we're seeing. So it really wouldn't be comparable to any of the other similar areas, even though it sounds like the developer's kind of framing it like it's similar to the surrounding community. Also, as we kind of talked about, you know, PUD is supposed to be a benefit to the community, right? It's supposed to have open spaces, other people have touched on to, and I won't go into it in big detail, you know, the open space is available, one, it's not available to the community because it's private, and two, the space that's available is not very usable. For me, a community member, next to it, it's not a benefit to me, it's actually something that I feel is going to add more congestion to the Centennial Trail. I'm a mom of two kids, we have our bikes on the trail, you know, that's something that we're on a lot, we're going to have a lot more cars, traffic coming out of this area. Ponderosa Elementary is only about three blocks away, again, you have kids commuting to school on the Centennial Trail, we're going to add much more traffic there. So I think that the, the surrounding neighbors certainly don't feel like this place is a benefit to them. It's just going to add extra congestion, extra traffic. The only benefit is going to be for the people actually living in the development. The only benefit is gonna be for the people actually living in the development. Also, they're asking for exemptions for the lot area. So, looking for asking for 3,600 square feet instead of the typical 6,500 square feet. They're asking the lot width to come down to 35 feet instead of 60 feet. This is, they're asking for all of these things because of this ravine and the unique topography of the area and the amount of houses that they're trying to get in this area. And the fact that they have to ask for all these exemptions tells me that maybe this is not appropriate for the area. You know, as the population grows, we wanna really still respect Post Falls community and respect our watersheds, respect the green spaces that we have. The gentleman who mentioned that these acreage is an area where kids are using drugs and there's crime, I've lived there for 10 years. Like I said, my house kind of backs up to it. I have two dogs. They tell me about every squirrel that's there. Never seen a single person there, so I would say that that's definitely a falsehood. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Also in opposition wishing to speak, Josh, is it Carruthers?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Carruthers. Same story, name, address, and you, sir, have four minutes.
Hi, my name's Josh Carruthers. I live at 417 South Timber Lane in Post Falls. I live basically right across the street where this will be happening. I would like to request that the map be put up with the artist's rendition, with the green map as it's been referred to. I've lived at 417 South Timber Lane for about 20 years. I, I live across from that, where that culvert is. That culvert is in my backyard, begins there. There's also a French drain there. Water, it doesn't take a lot, but water, when it pulls up on Ponderosa Boulevard, which is bold there, you get water coming from the east, you get water from the west coming down Ponderosa Boulevard, it pulls there. The drains on the street can't handle it, even the new one. I've seen it overwhelmed. The water flows over the sidewalk, under my fence, down my road towards the culvert while eroding that hillside, which was man-made, built to hold up Ponderosa Boulevard. I have called the city to express my concern about that. I finally got ahold of somebody in the Streets Department that told me they are aware of the issue and that they believe the culvert is crushed and compromised under Ponderosa Boulevard, and that it's gonna be a major undertaking to fix that. That water pulls up in my backyard, fills up the French drain quickly, it's overwhelmed, and I have a lake in my backyard. It also pulls into my neighbor's backyard. That is a natural drainage, and I believe that culvert needs to be addressed before anything gets developed on the other side, let alone a PUD. I have asked, when I first lived there, I went to the city and inquired about building a shop on the lower part of my lot, and was told I could not do that because it's a natural drainage. So, I don't know what would have changed between now and, between then and now, but that culvert has not been repaired. So, I see that as a major problem here, that I believe that needs to be addressed before anything is built over there. You're gonna flood me out, the Ponderosa floods, it'll flood off my side. I've seen it flood off the other side towards the proposed PUD. I'm concerned about the cluster boxes on Ponderosa Boulevard, as others have testified to. I watch, my kid goes, went to Ponderosa Elementary. I see kids riding their bikes, mothers pushing their babies, and I believe that with cluster boxes there, in 50 units coming and going, and that's going to, I think that's gonna make a dangerous situation on Centennial Trail. I also think it's bogus that the people leaving, leaving this PUD are gonna turn left on Ponderosa Boulevard, those who are headed west, when it's much easier to shoot right up Timber Lane, across my house, up my quiet street, left on Black Forest where there's no stop sign. That's a quicker route to get to Greens Ferry than it is waiting to merge for the traffic on Ponderosa, turning left, and then going up Greens Ferry. So, I believe that those people on Timber Lane and Black Forest are up for a rude awakening with the amount of traffic flying up and down there. The parking worries me. These small garages, I know my garage is a catch-all, so I use my wide driveway to park. Once in a while, I have to park out on the street. I have a feeling when there's a Super Bowl party, or it's Thanksgiving, or a weekend, where are these people gonna park? They're gonna park either on Ponderosa Boulevard or Timber Lane, and I think that's gonna take away from the current homeowners there, their quality of life, being able to park out there. Everyone will be scrambling to find a parking space.
Forty-five seconds, sir.
Okay, thank you. I'll make it quick. Another concern of mine is the adverse effect on my property value. I will be looking across the street at four, two duplexes, four units. You can call it a twin home, but that's just a fancy word for duplex. That is not helping my property value or anybody else's, anyone else's property value in that area. I propose you stick to R1 zoning. I see the only ones benefiting from this PUD being the developers, their investors, at the cost of the current homeowners there. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, just to clarify, the culvert you're speaking of is the same one that was brought up earlier, correct?
Yes, sir. Exact same one.
Next up, in opposition wishing to speak, Mr. Burns.
Yeah, no, you'd need to turn it in.
Yeah, we would need to turn it in for the record, but at this point, we'll have to review it another time.
Howard Burns, 502 South Rocky Point Court. I live on the corner of Rocky Point Court in Ponderosa, directly across from Ponderosa Elementary. My house is built, it's one of eight, that was built taking two riverfront lots, leaving the two big homes on the river, and then parcelizing out the back half, if you want to call it, into lots of 11,000 square feet plus. That, to me, is what represents what should be happening on everything on the south side of Ponderosa, but it is an R1 zone. I have provided here a little map. I am not an engineer also, but you've heard all the objections. The view from Ponderosa will be of garages. The view from this side over here on this property will be garages on an alley. You can solve all that problem by staying with the R1 zone, using the tiny little 6,500 square foot lots, when all the lots in the area are 8,000 square feet plus. You've got 31 lots. You change the road to a loop road. It fits. It's using their grading plan, which is designed to get the most area buildable they can. You're still gonna have homes built on the ravine down here, and so I point out also that when they show the elevation, the beautiful elevation of the treehouse, oh, here's how it looks, and here's what it looks like. These elevations are from down in the ravine. They're not from the street. From the street, you're gonna see a garage, just like you do on this side. If you drive down Rivlet Lane, all you're gonna see are garages. If you're, if you own a piece of property, and I believe the lady that does spoke, owns the piece of property to the east, the road here seems to go into that property. Where does that road go? Is that designed to set up another PUD so we have another one coming in? Is that what the city's saying? We're gonna have a road going through somewhere? Where is that road going? Riverfront, excuse me, River Run is in Post Falls. It is a gated private road community with a beach area, a pool, common areas, and it's all taken care of. It does have duplexes. They're on 3,3,700 square foot lot minimums. The houses are restricted in size from 1,115 square feet to 1,450 square feet. If you take an aerial shot of River Run and you look at the amount of open space that is outside the parcel lines, it's about 30% of the duplex area of River Run is in open space. If you're gonna use a community, you say you're gonna have duplexes, and all the garages are out on front, it's not such an onerous thing because the lots are decent enough size width-wise. If you have an R1 lot, it's 65 feet wide, you actually, and that means 108 foot deep. Remember, you can have a lot that's 85 feet wide and not quite as deep, and you can put the garages in back if you want. If you, and these, where all the garages are gonna be in back, and it's gonna make a wonderful streetscape, but everyone's gonna park on that street because you can't park in the alleys. There's no garage aprons, so everybody's gonna be parked on your beautiful street with no driveways because that's the only place to park. The project is too dense. The grades and natural topography, be happy with the 31 lots. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Another individual in opposition wishing to speak, Roland Mueller. Mr. Mueller, I'm sure I don't have to repeat myself, but just in case, name and address, sir.
Thank you. My name is Roland Mueller. I live on 415 South Timber Lane, and most of what I had on my list has already been said, but I'm, I have a family, I have six kids. I live just next to Josh, and so his culvert, the whole story there is for sure true. As a matter of fact, in the winter time, it can be very hazardous because it gets slick and cars run into Ponderosa because of that. I don't make it up, Timber Lane, because there's an ink light. I'm more concerned about the neighborhood of the traffic view because this is not a development for 55 and older. This is a development where you have dynamic people. They want to take the boat out, they pay enough to be there, and you will have traffic. When you come out of that development and you expect the people going left and right, most will cut through. If you have a navigation system and you want to go and visit your friends, your navigation system will tell you to come from Greens Ferry, make left on Black Forest and come up on Timber Lane. There's no way that anybody will use Ponderosa. We have only walkways on one side. We have a lot of families, these are big homes. We have now people who come back. My neighbor has a kid who came back with their children because they cannot afford the house. Our community, we have more cars parked on the street. If there's not enough parking in that development, you will have these people park on Timber Lane because Ponderosa, you cannot park, otherwise you get a ticket with the Centennial Trail. So, it will stock up everything. We know that Greens Ferry will be opened up because we know potentially it will be so clustered with the development that you have to do something for the people from the other side of the river to make it into town. And so, that Greens Ferry will be opened up. You will have a traffic light on Ponderosa and Greens Ferry. That's another indicator that people will go through our neighborhood. And I please, would like to ask you, if you have children, family, make a good development, but a safe one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. In opposition wishing to speak, Dana Rashudi. Oh, Dana? Sorry.
Hello, my name is Dana Lynn Rashudi, and I am the resident at South, South 522 Shore Pines Court, Post Falls. I grew up in this area, working for my father, changing irrigation pipe, picking beans on the Rathron Prairie. So, Idaho is, is my home. I love Idaho so much that I taught my husband into buying our home two decades ago. When we bought our home, there was this beautiful vacant lot next to us, which is the said development, and my husband and I were interested in maybe acquiring that piece of land for ourself and building onto our home as we have a very large family. At that time, the present owner of our home told us that that land had easement on it from the city for drainage, and we would never be able to be, to build on that piece of land. So, I am really surprised. I mean, I have no reason not to believe that that easement didn't exist, and, you know, for 23 years, we've always believed that nobody could build on that piece of property. So, now, it is our belief that building 47 homes on, on that property is going to cause excessive flooding on our property and as well as land slippage. I'm really curious to know who's going to be responsible for the damage of our property. Is it going to be the developer? Is it going to be the city? Or, I mean, what's gonna happen to our home? Because I, I truly believe that we are, our home is in danger of flooding. Another, another point, my home, you, I don't know if you can see it here, but there is a community beach to the left of me on my boundary, and there is, in front of me, we have a community dock. And now, this new builder, in his initial application, which actually, I have a copy of, but you probably do, but if you need the photo, I have it here, but his initial application, he was proposing to build an additional community beach and community dock on the western boundary of my wall. So, in other words, I would have been sandwiched between two community beaches and two community docks. And honestly speaking, I believe that a community dock to, you know, that's going to take care of 47 homes, I mean, this is more like a marina. It's not a, a community dock, and.
Forty-five seconds.
Okay. Even, even though, you know, it, they've taken it out, as recent as last week, when, and he was discussing things, and this is in public record, he was saying to people that were interested in this land that there would be a community dock. So, let's see. I feel like, I feel that there's.
In seconds.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. I just feel like that, I just feel the builder is very, I mean, I feel he's really disrespecting me as a neighbor. He didn't, if he's going to have a dock or a beach, he could have moved it down to the other side, but instead, he's put it right next to me. So, I'm, you know, if this goes through, which I'm hoping and praying that it doesn't because not only is my house gonna be flooded out, I'm also gonna have all of everybody's friends, everybody's relatives also down next to me, well, you know, in my dream home that, you know, was my dream 22 years ago, you know, and it seems like my dream home is now everyone else's dream, so.
Okay. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Also in opposition wishing to speak, Ted, is it Pettibone?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. My name is Ted Pettibone. I live on Shore Pines Road, 516 Shore Pines Road, part of the whole, the, the community there. And, you know, my real concern here is there was an annexation meeting, there was a discussion that went on in that annexation meeting that would have led anybody to believe this was gonna be R1 zoning, 6,500 square feet per lot minimum. There were discussions with Mr. Latham, Mr. Davis, and I think, I forget the other person's name, that we're kind of talking about slopes and drainages and how, yeah, I don't see how we could build anything that would have a lot size that would dip below the 6,500 square feet. So, I'm really concerned that we had a public meeting, presented that, got the annexation, and now we're coming back and asking for something that is dramatically different in my mind, in terms of the usage and the, what do we call it? I've learned a lot of terms here tonight because I'm not a real estate person, land usage types, okay? And I saw this the other night. I went to the thing. And I saw this the other night, I went to the thing, and I very much appreciate the, the open house that they had to explain the project. But what I said in that meeting was, if you just look at this picture, and you look at this development here that's being proposed, and then you look at the one next to it, which is where I live, those, this is a square peg through a round hole. You cannot deny that. And that's not what the annexation meeting led people to believe. If you go across the street, I walk it with my grandson all the time, it's very similar to our neighborhood. I learned in the discussion about the, what is it, the Tulamore Vista Annexation, I heard a comment that said, "Well, we're, we're proposing this type of land use." Who, is, is that consistent? And the comment was made, the developer that develops first gets the land use. Well, I would contend, we have developed first, or the people before me, develop first. And now, we're supposed to sort of subjugate ourselves to what I believe is a different land use. And so what I would say to the, to, to the commission, reject the PUD. I absolutely think the property should be developed. It's a, it's private, you know, it's somebody's property, they've paid for it, they should be able to develop that. But consistent with the surrounding area. And so I would say we should reject the PUD. And, you know, one of the slides that the city presented, the one that was kind of an eye chart, it had two lines in there, I'm very good at numbers, and it said, "R1, how many homes could you build?" Forty. "R1S, how many homes could you build?" Or lots? Twenty-five. I'm thinking down more to the 25 to 30 is probably appropriate. So I would ask the commission to strike a decision that's a balance between protecting people's property rights, to be able to develop their property, but also looking out for the, for the, the ownership and the property of all these taxpaying neighbors, that we don't have an inconsistent use. And so I think it's, you know, I would ask you to make that balanced decision, reject the PUD, and move more towards what was originally described in the annexation, which is R1 to R1S. And I think that'd be consistent with what, what, you know, we thought was, was being proposed upfront. With that, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Wishing to speak, I did catch one that was neutral on the hearing, William Graber. William, are you still here? Mr. Graber, have you come forward, state your name and address, you have four minutes.
I'm William Graber. I live at 416, 418 South Greenbrier Court, which is across Ponte Rosa from here. I too went to the meeting that they had. And considering what they had prior, this is a great improvement. However, again, the, there's, it's too many units. And my concern is, as the gentleman that lives across the way with the ravine and that drainage, that ravine at Ponte Rosa is quite deep. And he's got it infilled quite a bit. And how's he handling that drainage that's coming through there? Because yes, there is a culvert down there. And yes, it has flooded his yard, if he's still here, I saw that. I mean, because it does flow to it, and so all that debris that's in that road piles up on top of that drainage grate, limiting the water to go down there. The only way I could see him doing anything on that eastern side of that property, is putting a bridge over that ravine. I can't see him infilling it to put those units on top of it. But like I say, it's an improvement over what they had. So that's all I have to say. Everybody else has covered everything that I was talking about.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. As we discussed earlier, Mr. Pelissro, you have four minutes if you have any additional information that you wish to submit at this time.
I appreciate that for an additional opportunity. I would like to point out, and I'll try not to touch anything, it was after mine, so I'm not, so in fairness to rebuttal through. They did point out when Mr. Lank was presenting, he talked about the great streetscape, the great streetscapes, they called it. Well, that's really great for them. This is a private community, they're going to make it gated, so it's not like any of us are going to see it. No, at our expense, they're putting 34 homes, nowhere do we have alleys with homes on garages. They're putting it all, to everybody else's view, taking away from their property values. So yeah, their streetscape's going to be really, really pretty, but the rest of us are not. Again, we call into question all the stormwater calculations. I don't think we're still putting, oh, the other thing, I'm trying to make notes back there real fast. The, as I called through there, all the homes on that ravine, if you saw their drawings that he did show you, those treehouses, they call them, they are not calling out anything as far as what they're doing, those are all slopes. Which way does the driveways up there go? Do the driveways go to the street? If they go to the street, were those included in the stormwater calculations? If they are going away from the street, since that's all already downhill, are they going to build it up and fill it in? If they're going away from the street, all that water running down the sides of these homes, all that erosion, and I think there's only like 16 feet between the houses, all that erosion going straight down into that ravine, straight out to the river. And again, that's why you can see how it jets out there. So that's the type of things that should be. Again, on their, their design load calculations, that, you know, specifically it was called out, that the rec, they need a further evaluation based on, for appropriate structures. Mr. Manley called out in the previous incompleteness letter, which we, again, emphasize, we have not given a completeness letter, that called out retaining wall design and setbacks, yet now they say they'll just submit them. So we have no way to review those, to make sure to protect my own property. You know, also on those calculations that I had for the basin C up there, all that stuff for the pavement, the 45,000 square feet of pavement, they also don't call in for the driveways. There's 11 driveways that also spoke to that slope to that street that are over 500 feet each. Those aren't in there. Also, something very subtly called out on one of their other blueprints, and I, I don't know, maybe there's an explanation for it, but there is a, says, a 12-inch CMP culvert that starts 106 feet, goes to, in the middle of the street, a stormwater manhole, and then another 90 feet of 12-inch CMP culvert. It's very subtly called out. But when you look at the numbers for the inlet and the outlets of it, and where they have the indications, it looks like they're starting up there at the beginning of basin C, where they're going to join in from the culvert underneath and direct it to basin C, a stormwater manhole in the middle, and then matching up the numbers, it comes out in the bottom of that ravine. Are they bypassing basin C?
One minute, sir.
Okay. Oh, I thought you were saying one.
Nope.
Okay. So, you know, I don't know what those, those numbers are, but they're very subtly called out on those plans, and kind of, kind of worried that they're bypassing something there. At the end of North Ravine Drive, at the very end, the last 150 feet, they're calling it a 5.5% slope. When you look at the grading plans underneath for the profile, they're going to build that road up. So what is going to be there to stop that water at a 5.5% slope from going right up and over and into that property there, flooding them out, and it running right down their property, right into, right through their yards? The emergency access. Somebody gets hurt down here at this open space, the closest a fire truck can get, about 600 feet up, they can't get a fire truck, that's usually the first one on a scene for an emergency, they can't get a fire truck down that 10-foot cart path. So they got to hike all the way down there, or tumble down the side of the hill to try and help somebody. And I would really feel sorry for somebody down there, especially if they propose a boat dock, involved in a boating accident, a heart attack, or whatever, waiting for someone to hike that far down to be able to try and help it. I think it's just too, it's just too dense for this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the extra time, sir.
Rebuttal. Yeah, actually, I think everybody could use that, so we'll take a quick, can we take 10? We'll take a 10-minute break, resume in 10 minutes.
So that was kind of the big, the big ticket item from a lot of folks. I don't think there's a lot that needs to be said about that, other than I feel like we designed around that condition to take advantage of this topography. Typically driveways do drain back to the road, the proposed, you know, we haven't laid out each individual home for this property. I guess there was another item talking about drainage where what are, what are the driveways going to do? And how is this going to work? And then there, there's another question about why does your trail have drainage ditches on each side? Well, because the integrity of an asphalt trail needs to be preserved and you have to get your stormwater. There's a hillside adjacent to it. There's going to be natural flow that flows, you know, from the natural grasses and the natural hillsides that'll remain to that, that area. And then naturally down towards the river. That's why they're, they're just small rivulets that drain to the Spokane River. They are treated. We're not required to treat stormwater coming offsite to our site. We're just required to address the stormwater on our property. We, and like I discussed before, we're being asked to address the stormwater, most notably down lots, down around lots 33 and 34. That's going to be a condition of approval that we address all that stormwater that comes from the impervious surfaces on those lots. We have to address that so it doesn't flow offsite. We're asking the neighbors to do that now. For years it has mitigated or been mitigated by just outletting it to our property. There's ways we could help them, but they haven't come forth and said that. They just want to argue with us about that. So it's, it's not a responsibility for their drainage to flow to our property and to make it our, our problem. So we're hoping they can address that issue grading wise. I mean, we've tried to, to make that the best we can and take care of that. So one of the ways we're trying to take care of that, and I'll bring that up. If you can zoom in, I wanted to show you what this rock wall looks like. It was a, it was a conversation piece. There's, there's kind of two different scenarios. One, there's a small portion of the property. Go back up here. Right in this area, right here. That is where the drainage issue exists. The rest of the site, the road, the proposed road will be above or below, excuse me, the, the existing topography. In this particular case, the road's going to be a little bit above, two to three feet above that existing ground right there. And so in that particular case, you'll have a rock wall that'll be built and then the site will be built up adjacent to it. We're proposing a side obscuring fence on that property, on our side of the property, not on their property, on our side of the property. In this particular case, the original homeowner, who I've known the majority of my life, he built a pool. So a large portion of that drainage has a ginormous concrete wall structure that extends out from the existing topography that comes down. So he's already addressing most of that issue right there. Where the problem is, he has a concrete patio at the lower side that he constructed. Again, the drainage issue was adjacent to that concrete patio. It's hard to design around that to create your roads in this particular area. The homeowners could either have homes up against the back of their house or they could have this road. We're proposing this road to take advantage of the, of this beautiful ravine. And so what it's doing is it's creating that issue where we have stormwater. And again, the soils are suitable for infiltration. It does state that. And then you've got another section, and I'll try to move this around here. You've got another section, you know, if you can see it. Maybe this might work. Where the structures, the existing homes back here are well away from the proposed wall. And you have a retaining wall. That retaining wall will be at times 12 feet tall from the bottom of the swale up. When you design a retaining wall that is adjacent to a swale, there's design considerations that take place. There's, there's a million different types of retaining wall designs. A structural engineer or a geotech engineer will design that wall for us. Will provide that to the city. It's a condition of approval already. If it isn't, it's a condition of approval in our book. We'll provide that retaining wall design to the city with our design. And what we'll do in this particular case, the road's significantly lower than the adjacent properties. We're just taking advantage of the unique topography that's on the adjacent property. I know Ms. Rashidi spoke about the drainage and how it's going to flood her home. We've designed around her home and their encroachments that were constructed into Mr. Tetter's property. We've taken those into consideration. We shifted our lots to the west around those so that we could create a dry creek bed out of our swale in the event of an overflow or a bypass that will not interfere with their existing, their existing stairs, their existing landscaping. We're going to leave it in place. We have no objection to that. And we're designing around that so we can come in and be good neighbors. So that dry creek bed will outlet. It'll dissipate the energy of anything flowing down the hill and it'll be directed towards the river. This is treated stormwater. It's not, you know, impervious surface racing just to a neighbor's house. So we are addressing the stormwater concerns on this property. And I think that's one of the big things that, I mean, there's certain constraints we have to go through, design constraints we have to go through for our submittal. This is probably the most strenuous PUD submittal I've ever had in my entire life. And in that, we pretty much designed the entire system, the design, the entire project. It's almost ready for a full submittal. I mean, there's some minor tweaks, but that's not what a PUD typically does. A PUD comes forth as a, as a vision and you show some structures. I mean, we've gone through the point of designing structures that are, are ready to go. So I guess one of the biggest frustrations I have is, again, they, they said they're not engineers. I get that. Then they, they haven't been in the trenches with us this entire time, but these are the issues that we're just, we're trying to design around. I don't want to put my name on something that's not going to work. And as I hope I've shown the city over the years, those aren't the projects that I'm involved with. So another one of the neighbors spoke about, well, the geotech report. Yes, it, we didn't really have an opportunity. Geotecs are limited in this area and very busy. I spoke to the geotech. Unfortunately, the person that prepared this particular report passed away. I spoke to his right-hand guys that were involved with this original geotech report that was for a single-family home. And they assured me, we're going to go through and do a full new report for the site, which is typically what occurs. You do a full new report for the site when you go forth with the project. If I get approval for this, we proceed. One of the first things we're going to do is go out and dig additional test holes. We need to know that information for our contractors to properly bid the job. Another issue that came forth from Mr. Leary was, he talked about the, the notice, the, I won't even get into the unlawful thing. I know the city attorney kind of addressed that, the timeliness of the submittals and yada, 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 the annexation. But more so the notice of intent with EPA. I don't know of an engineer out there that has an initial submittal that goes in with a notice of intent to the EPA. That's just not something we do. The EPA, they're very busy. We're not going to go submit something, hey, we might get approval on this. Can you give us an approval letter? That's, it's not required. Unfortunately, the code is, has that statement. But I, again, I've submitted many projects to the city and it's never been a requirement, but it will happen. We will take care of this before construction starts. I guarantee you, it's a requirement for me as an engineer to sign off on the job. It's stated right in my plans. I think it's even stated in my initial plans that it's a requirement for the contractor to take care of that. So another issue is the density. And I want to just say something and then hand it off to Mr. Lenker and give him five minutes, sorry. Densities, we went through and did the same study. And unfortunately, the person that spoke before, they went and picked the bigger developments in the area and said, well, this is 2.2, you know, units per acre. Well, just down the road, you're looking at 4.2 units per acre. You're looking at 3.9 units per acre. You're looking at 3.7 units per acre, zero open space, zero public space, you know, zero design considerations, houses that are 10 feet apart. I mean, we're talking about a project that took a lot of forethought. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Lenker to discuss the rest of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Just real briefly, the, the only things that I would add would be first emphasize that in terms of, of looking out in backyards and seeing garages, we, we, there's planter strips, there's trees, even in the swales, there's going to be landscaping, plus the side obscuring fence. And we're, we're certainly willing to, to be good neighbors and work with the neighbors to even address existing conditions that where their drainage flows onto this property. There's even concrete steps and encroachments have been built on the property and that we're, we're trying to work with them and we'll work out all these details. And, and we want to be good neighbors, obviously, and going forward. Just real quick, the, I've just got a couple of minutes, but I want to go back to. So this, this here is a, we just showed you an excerpt before that had to do with the interior setbacks. There was, there were some comments made about setbacks as far as, as garage is not allowing any kind of, of, and, and concerns about not insufficient parking. As we, as we showed before, the, the, each of the units, except the, the ones along Ponderosa, there, there's, there's street parking for, there's 40 street parking units. And those are designated which side of the street they're on, and those can be counted. Those meet city standards. There's two-car garages for every unit, plus most of the units have at least one, one guest parking space alongside, if not two, in front of the garage for the front-loaded unit. So you can, you can objectively count the, the parking that's provided and it's almost twice the city standard. If we open, it, it is a gated community, clarify that. If it was open to the public and with that beach down there, then it, it certainly would be an issue with a lot of people coming from outside the area. There's a wonderful public park right down the street that's for that purpose. But we, we would, it would create a lot more traffic and parking issues if this is open to the public. And, but the, the other thing in terms of the density, just, just to close real quick. So if you take, you take an acre of land, that's 43,560 square feet. You take five units per acre times 6,500, that, that equals 32,500 square feet, which as I mentioned earlier. That leaves 11,000, a little over 11,000 square feet for public right-of-way. So you have to fit in your streets and so forth. So we, we did a, a quick analysis and, and, and real rough layout. And if we were to go forward without this PUD and with all the, the efforts that's gone into this and create a beautiful neighborhood, not only for the people that live here, but that, in, in the whole area. We could, we did a layout and if we went ahead and, and just loved, did, did mass grading, leveled everything, we could put a culvert down, whatever the drainage situation would have to be, it'd have to be accommodated anyway. We, we could do mass grading, take down all the trees, have no open space, and then privatize the waterfront. In other words, just line it up with, with, with lots that are 60 feet wide. And we, we came up with about 45 lots on that basis. No open space, ignore the natural features, tear down all the, cut down all the trees. And, and basically that, that's what we'd be left with. We think that this is going to be a lot nicer project and it's certainly not going to diminish anybody's surrounding property values. Wherever these kinds of projects have been done well, this traditional neighborhood approach, because they're so well-received, they, they, there's statistics, surveys that show that they, they average between 10 and 20% higher than conventional front-loaded garage subdivisions in, in the immediate market area. So my time's up, but we really appreciate your time and consideration and, and all the good questions and concerns from, from everybody here, so.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Any questions from the commissioners for the applicants? Anything else that you want to cover from them?
I have one question. I'd like to clarify something that Scott said.
Okay.
So the, the surface water runoff is clearly a very big issue here for everybody involved. Did I understand you correctly, Scott, that the only area you're saying there is an issue? And I don't know if this is legally an obligation of a, of a private property owner to accommodate their neighbor's surface water runoff, even if they classically have. I certainly wouldn't expect any of the existing neighbors to handle surface water runoff from their project. But is there any, I don't know if there's an illegal obligation at all, but it sounds like you're saying that you've, there is only one area where there's an existing, where there would potentially be a problem with one of these homeowners?
Well, again, Scott MacArthur, the, the neighbors, a, a group of the neighbors hired an engineer who I work with on a regular basis. Super smart, knowledgeable man. And he pointed out this drainage issue that two of the neighbors in this particular location, it's right here. On public record, I'll say, I actually know this person. I, I want to, I want to help them. I want to deal with this issue and I, I would make it a condition of approval. And I'll put it out there, even if the developer's listening right now and makes me pay for it. I would say that I don't want them to have that issue because I wouldn't want that in my backyard. So I will put in a catch basin with their permission. And we can take that overflow, irrigation water, drainage water, water, whatever it is, and we can pipe it over to our large basin. There's plenty of space, plenty of room in our large basin there on the northeast side of the property. It, it won't be an issue. The, the only issue would be them to allow us to put that in and we would address it. Then they don't have to do anything other than just allow us to put it in, find that spot, deal with the drainage. I, I would be willing to do that. We want to make this work. We want to work with the neighbors. I think we made a good point of that when we, we had our town hall meeting. Unfortunately, not everybody showed up, but I was, I was hoping more people would show. I didn't have to spend that much money, which was good. But we, we have a project here that there's, I mean, as engineers, and I, I think I've heard many engineers say, there's a million ways to skin the cat. We can address those issues, but we've got to come together and work together on those. And I haven't been trying to avoid them or not deal with them. It's just when there's. my backyard. So I will put in a catch basin with their permission, and we can take that overflow, irrigation water, drainage water, whatever it is, and we can pipe it over to our large basin. There's plenty of space, plenty of room in our large basin there on the northeast side of the property. It won't be an issue. The only issue would be them to allow us to put that in, and we would address it. Then they don't have to do anything other than just allow us to put it in, find that spot, deal with the drainage. I would be willing to do that. We wanna make this work. We wanna work with the neighbors. I think we made a good point of that when we had our town hall meeting. Unfortunately, not everybody showed up, but I was, I was hoping more people would show. I didn't have to spend that much money, which was good. But we, we have a project here that there's, I mean, as engineers, and I think I've heard many engineers say, there's a million ways to skin the cat. We can address those issues, but we've gotta come together and work together on those. And I haven't been trying to avoid them or not deal with them. It's just, when there's opposition, there's opposition, and you don't, you know, it's just hard. So to answer your question, Mr. Schlaauer, the drainage can be addressed. They can address it on their property, or they can allow, work with us to pick that up and just take it to our basin that has plenty of retention area.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope?
Thank you.
Just like a courtroom hearing, there's a back and forth, and there's a final piece. That was the final piece, so I appreciate...
There's a misunderstanding that I just wanted to clarify.
You can clarify it with him afterwards and have that conversation. Unfortunately, we would have to reopen everything. Any other questions for applicant? Nope? Okay. Questions for staff?
None.
Ross, did you have?
Just my question is, is there any obligation legally from the property owner to accommodate that surface runoff?
I'm unaware of, but...
I'm not aware of that either. I'd have to look into that.
Typically, people handle the runoff on their own site. They're responsible for what they generate for themselves.
Again, again, we went back and forth, and I think that we've covered everything. This is a situation that, whether it's the applicant or the individuals here, don't agree with the decision that is rendered or with some of the information that was put forth, there's always the opportunity for an appeal, but we're trying to get through this process, all the information, so I appreciate your patience. Any other questions for staff?
John, and maybe I should know this by now, but, so this is all R1. At a high level, how does the PUD fit in there with the different lot sizes and everything? Just, how does that really fit?
So allowable, I guess. So there's processes that occur, and some of them overlay. So almost always, when it comes to a PUD, there's an initial request for zoning. PUDs exist because the zoning district that's been assigned to them may not meet the needs of the ultimate design needs. So whether it's a commercial PUD or an industrial PUD or some other form of residential PUD, I've done a five-acre multifamily PUD, it's because what they want, the outcome is greater than what the code would rely or allow. So as far as an R1, the minimum allowed for an R1 standalone is 6,500 square feet. In this case, because of design considerations, they're asking for that PUD, which defaulted in the need to provide that open space. It's almost always the trade-off is some sort of design consideration for open space.
Gotcha. Okay. Thanks.
Anything else?
John, then if this was just done, then as a strictly R1, they wouldn't have to put in any open space, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Last call, questions for staff? Do we need anything else? Okay. Go ahead and close the hearing. I am going to go all the way down to the end. James?
I don't even know where to start, honestly. Oh, goodness. I think this is a complicated project, and I, no, I think, just from what I heard tonight, maybe the parties could've worked together a little better, to be honest with you, but I think there is some, I think they wanna try to work together. You know, obviously, a developer wants to develop the land, and the property owners around do not want to, you know, have anything happen to their property, whether it's erosion or spillage or flood damage. I don't know. You know, a couple of things that I wrote down when I was listening to everything was, you know, about the property line and the fences. So it looks like there's gonna be a fence on the side, and then seeing the, what the actual levels will look like once the retaining walls get in there, where the stormwater's gonna go. You know, another thing that I think about, and this has come up numerous times, this is just one step. Even if we approve this tonight, there's still lots of other steps that have to be done, and, you know, for example, the soil, if that gets a full one and that fails, you know, maybe it has to start all over. I don't, you know, that's just something else that we have to consider. I don't know. For me, this is, I don't know, there's just a lot of, it's a difficult one. I just, again, this has been said a lot tonight, I'm not an engineer. I don't know enough about this stuff to really make a fair judgment. All's I can go on is what's actually in the staff report and make a decision off that. So that's kinda where I stand.
Biggie Joe?
Yeah, I would have to rely on and have belief in our planning and zoning department that they look at all this stuff and that something, especially for the drainage and stuff, it's gonna all be done so it works. I mean, they're not gonna let a development be built that drainage and stuff is a problem. And it's kind of, right now, the lesser of two evils. I look at the development, and it looks like it would be very nice, but then I look also the density, but when I find out R1, they could have just about the same amount of density, but no open areas or anything, just configure it a little bit different. So I don't know. I just, I have to think on this for a little while longer and listen to the rest of the comments.
Ray?
So, kinda for the benefit of the crowd out there, we, as a planning commission, and I think Warren talked about it earlier, we're a quasi-judicial group of people here. That means we're acting as a judge, so we have, we have specific criteria that are set forth by state code and city code as to what we, what matters essentially for an approval or a denial. Whether we like it or not is irrelevant. Whether we think that there's the, the shape of the houses or the, you know, the, what kind of siding is on a house or that kind of thing, that's completely irrelevant. The main focus of a lot of the public hearing or the public testimony is we're here to get evidence and understand things that relate to, evidence that relates to those criteria. A lot of times in public hearings, we don't hear that. This is one of those public hearings that we did. We heard about a stormwater culvert that backs up and causes problems on an adjacent property that needs to be addressed. We heard about potential drainage onto adjacent properties. Now, as a, as a board, we have to, we can take these things, and we can either, we can approve with conditions, or if we, we can deny, but if we deny, we have to tell the applicant, we have to give them a path towards approval. That's a requirement by code. As we were going through the public testimony, and a lot of people said, you know, they're not engineers, and I happen to be one. And so I understand a lot of this very well, and I was able to write down five additional conditions of approval that I think would be appropriate to address the concerns specifically with regards to the, or to the criteria set forth in our ordinance. Condition 17, that's gonna be a lot here, but 17 would be, stormwater from the development and the lots shall be directed away from adjacent properties. Construction of necessary drainage structures shall be completed with subdivision improvements. That takes care of drainage from back lots that may drain onto an adjacent property owner, keeps everything contained within. Okay. Number 18, a notice of intent shall be submitted to the EPA prior to construction commencing. That is standard practice based for construction. That EPA has a completely different set of rules than the City of Post Pauls does, but that ensures that the public is protected through the process of the EPA. Condition 19, upstream drainage from the existing 24-inch culvert shall be maintained such that existing capacity is not infringed. That means that basically, if there's, that 24-inch culvert drains property from upstream, they're not allowed to dam it up and stop it and make things worse. Number 20 would be, retaining walls shall be designed such that adjacent properties are not physically impacted. Okay? That goes along with what Mr. MacArthur was talking about, and making sure that the adjacent properties, if they put a retaining wall on their side, that there's no physical impact to the adjacent properties. And the 21st, number 21, is a Geotech report shall be submitted with the construction plans, and I think that just kinda goes along hand in hand to ensure that the public is all protected and that, and Mr. MacArthur said he's fine with that as well. I think all, all of those, those five conditions, along with the 16 that are in the staff report, as well as the evidence provided in the staff report in the narrative, there's nothing to lead us to a denial. It would, with those conditions, I think it's, it would lead us to an approval, a conditional approval.
Ross?
Yeah, I think it's important that we respect the property rights of the existing landowners as well as the, as the developer landowner. I think in addition to what Ray is saying here, the offer that the applicant made to make a condition of approval be to work with any of the adjacent landowners who have surface runoff onto the property to help them deal with that, I think that's a great concession to make and an olive branch to the, to the future neighbor, and I, I like the idea of that. I'm not sure how you write it, but I think it would be a good idea.
I thought that, I was kinda trying to incorporate that into the retaining wall so it's not impacted, so they can't put a retaining wall in, it's gonna dam up the neighbor's property, and that should, that should take care of that.
Just put Scott in parentheses?
Yes, Scott will pay for it.
I, my, my biggest concerns were the drainage. Obviously, some buffer issues. I understand that people don't wanna be looking at cars parked on the street, but I think Ray addressed really some of my biggest concerns, and, and that along with the applicant making some, some offers to work with the existing homeowners. I think, I think that the development is somewhat unique, but I think it's what we're probably going to be seeing more of, just developments that offer a different, a little bit different property types or a little higher density area, a little, a little more open space. I think it's just the way that we're gonna see developments, and actually, I, I kind of like those kind of developments with a kind of a mix. And as much as, as hard as it is to have development come in and take up a bunch of open space that, that people have enjoyed for years, and I understand that, I understand that's hard to deal with, we're gonna see it more and more, unfortunately, and it's just, hopefully, we can make good choices and put the best product in there for everyone. And I think this kind of, I think this does it.
I think the process was showcased tonight in the sense of, there was a lot of information. We had, was it 371 pages of information prior to that we went through? There was a great deal of work, and I appreciate everyone's input. I think the reality of it is, as in anything, communication's the issue, and I think that even in the process of this evening's hearing, there was some communication that was brought forth, and I think with Ray's additional recommendations there, I think that it definitely solves the concerns that I had, and I think everybody was on the same page. They're very, very focused on, you know, is the culvert a massive issue? Obviously, it is. Does it look like that they're going to work to get that taken care of? I believe so. I think there was an immense amount of time and energy put in to this. We saw, we were gonna see it in December, it got pulled off, it was continually fixed, continually fine-tuned, and as far as density goes, I agree with Nancy. I think this is something that we're going to see, and I think it's something that's gonna continue to be extremely desired. Unless there's any other input from the commissioners, I would look for a motion in some capacity.
I'll start it. I'll do it. I would move to approve the North Shore District subdivision and PUD file numbers SUBD 0001-2021 and PUD 0001-2021, finding that as conditioned, adopting conditions 1 through 16, as well as 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21, as I described in earlier tonight. I can write those down for you guys if you'd like. Finding that it is met as conditioned, the requirements of both the subdivision and the PUD ordinance.
I'll second. Got a motion to second? Call for a vote?
Ambi?
Yes.
Schlaauer?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Okay. Action item number five this evening, actually...
A third public hearing, we gotta continue, don't we?
Or we recognize that it's been...
So, yes, so we should enter into the record due to part of the presentation tonight being on the East Coast, that at this point, we are going to move the impact fee adoption to a later date, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions with that? Then, that brings us to...
What?
Do we need a motion?
We need a motion to table...
I would move to table the public hearing for the impact fees to a date uncertain in the future.
I second.
Do we need a call for a vote, or can we all in favor?
I think you can all in favor.
All in favor? Say aye. Perfect.
All in favor.
Action item number five, new business. Mr. Manley, any new business this evening? Administrative or staff reports?
None as well.
Commissioners, anything else to add?
It's nice to be back. Well, I've been here, but it's nice for all you guys to be back.
Yeah. Okay. I look for a motion to adjourn, so done.